Good evening. The San Dimas City Council and Susessor Agent Meeting will come to order. Please rise. Please follow me and then pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maria Galvin, California Joint Powers Insurance Agency. She's here to recognize the city for risk management award. Maria?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, staff and members of the public. My name is Maria Galvin and I'm the city's risk manager with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. We're a risk-sharing pool that consists of 123 member agencies throughout the state. There's municipalities, non-municipal members, and also joint power authorities within our membership. Every year, the California JPIA recognizes six of its members for their achievements in risk management. The winners of the 2022 Risk Management Awards were recognized last month at our Board of Directors meeting. The city of San Dimas received best overall performance for the liability program for member agencies without police exposure. Mayor Emmett Bader and Chris Constantine were present at our Board of Directors meeting to accept the award. Our members were evaluated based on their claims history, implementing risk management recommendations that we make as part of risk management evaluations, participation in programs that we offer, staff attending training opportunities, and the city's proactive approach to communicating with the California JPIA, not only calling us when something goes wrong, but being proactive and preventing risk. Congratulations to the city of San Dimas for its continued risk management efforts and on receiving this award. This wouldn't be possible without the leadership and support of your city manager, Chris, other staff. I'm in regular communication with many staff members across different departments. I can't call all of them out, but Michael, Brad, Scott, Sherry and others. And Brad is actually the chair of our newly-formed Risk Management Advisory Committee, so congrats, Brad, on that responsibility. And also definitely the council's support. Again, like I mentioned, I'm in regular communication with your staff. They reach out on a regular basis, and this clearly demonstrates that they understand loss exposures, preventing risk, and implementing best risk management practices, which not only benefits the city and the community, but also our entire risk-sharing pool. So congratulations to the city of San Dimas.
The city of San Dimas has been extremely busy this last week. We had three separate events, and I have to tell you that all three of them were absolutely superior. Was very proud to be the mayor of a city that really knows how to put together a party, and we had three of them. I'd like to have Captain Ash come up and accept a resolution for National Night Out. Whereas on August 2nd, 2022, the city of San Dimas hosted National Night Out in the Civic Center, and whereas National Night Out is a unique crime drug prevention event sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch, T A T W, and whereas National Night Out involves citizens, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials, and is designed to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support for and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships, and send messages to criminals letting them know that our neighborhoods are organized and are fighting back. And whereas National Night Out has proven to be an effective, inexpensive, and enjoyable program to promote neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships in our fight for a safer nation, and whereas participants included Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Fire Department, California Highway Patrol, San Dimas Mountain Rescue, Law Enforcement Explorers, civilian volunteers, mounted posse, and the city of San Dimas employees. Now thereof, therefore, I, Mayor Emmett Bader, Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner, council members Eric Nacano, Ryan Vienna, and Eric Weber do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to all who participated in National Night Out in 2022. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett Bader, here, have hereon set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this ninth day of August 2022. Could I have Mitch Crawford please come forward? Thank you, Mitchell. City of San Dimas proclamation, Sheriff's Booster Car Show. Whereas on July 31st, 2022, the San Dimas Sheriff's Station Booster Club held its 27th annual car show, and whereas 100% of the net proceeds go to the Booster Club to support our station volunteers, uniform reserves, mounted posse, San Dimas Mounted Rescue, Disaster Communication Services, Law Enforcement Explorers, and civilian volunteers, and the city of San Dimas employees. Whereas there is 185 cars on display and 10 vendors in attendance, and whereas the city of San Dimas would like to acknowledge the hard work of Mitchell and Susan Crawford for stepping in and coordinating the car show, and whereas organizations that assisted and participated, including the Los Angeles County Sheriff's, San Dimas Mountain Rescue, San Dimas Merchants, San Dimas City Staff. Now therefore, I, Mayor Emmett Bader, Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner, council members Eric Nacano, Ryan Vienna, and Eric Weber, do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to all who participated in the San Dimas Sheriff's Station Booster Club 27th Annual Car Show and made it a success. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett Bader, have hereon set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this ninth day of August 2022. Somebody take a picture for Susan so she doesn't feel like she's going to try to hold her picture up on the shelf.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for this. I will accept this on behalf of the volunteers, my committee that helped me and my beautiful, my beautiful wife for rescuing me with some of the details of the car show. The car show is cleverly disguised as a bunch of beautiful cars, a bunch of great food, some prizes and some things, but as you pointed out, it benefits our community because it helps our volunteers at the sheriff's station who alleviate some of our, some of the tasks from our sworn deputies so they can concentrate more on public service safety issues. And I'd like to borrow a page from, I hate to say this word, the late Vin Scully. When Vin received his star on the Walk of Fame in Hollywood, he dedicated part of that star to his longtime broadcast partner, Jerry Doggins. I would like to dedicate a lot of this to the city staff of San Dimas. They were exacting in their requirements. I had to sign a three-page document that said I would comply with this, all about public safety, sanitation, things like that. But they were encouraging, and they were almost like they were members of my committee, as I said last time, but they didn't have to attend the boring meetings. So, thank you very much. And I'd like to duck in one other thing. I had a little low-sugar event on National Night Out, and I can tell you that staff was there for me. They were hovering angels. So, thank you, staff, for what you did. Thank you.
Oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comments will be, will not be taken during each individual item except for public hearings. Comments on public hearing items may be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to a staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have speaker cards?
The first speaker is Margie Green.
Good evening, City Council and all the city workers, everybody that helped so much. I'm here tonight to speak for Sylvia Melendez, our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. She could not make it this evening, but she didn't want this week to go by without saying thank you to the city, to Parks and Rec, to all the volunteers, everyone, Mitchell especially for his wise words. Anyway, there were just so many people that go into having an event like the birthday, I want to say barbecue, but our birthday celebration. It was an absolute success, and I'm so proud to have been a part of it. And Sylvia really appreciates so much what goes into having a good event. We all know it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of pulling it together. Sylvia wishes everybody the best for next year, and we're looking forward to it. And Sylvia will be here in two weeks to let you know how much she really did appreciate it. But on behalf of Sylvia, the city council, the city of San Dimas, thank you from Sylvia.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nora Chin with Library Updates.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Nora Chin, to the new council, so the library manager. So today I'm going to share some library statistics after we reopen to you. So since we reopened on June 7, and it's already two more, more than two months, so we have registered more than 500 new library users, and we have circulated more than 15,000 items, 15,000, including books and DVDs and sound recordings. And during this time, then we offer summer reading program. We have more than 500 people register to our summer reading programs, and through these two months, that we offer more than 20 programs with about 400 attendees. So, we are doing very well, and it's demonstrated that the customers really miss our library, and we are really happy that we can reopen in time for the summer for the school before that they can enjoy, the kids come to the library. And we do receive a very good positive feedback from customer about our state parks pass. So when they check down those passes, they can visit a lot of the, not all of the state parks, but most state parks. And they just have a special pass, and for the experience, they just put on their, the, in their car, and they just pass, and they see it, they just go pass. And sometimes that you save $20, and for most important thing that you save your time to find parking. So it's really a wonderful service. So if you haven't used that, please come to the libraries. And the library right now is not just all books. It's, we have a different service. We have a state parks pass, we have a laptop and Chromebook to, and hotspot to, for customer to check down. And we do have a lot of digital services. And so if you haven't visited our library, you are welcome to come to the library in person or just visit our online, the LA County Library dot org for more services. Thank you.
Next speaker is Hope Palmerson, speaking on Charter Oak. Pete Sluice on Other Business Number Three, the MetroLink item.
First, I wanted to note that as far as MetroLink goes, there are good days and bad days, but for me in the past few years have generally been good. We settle into routines and acclimate to our surroundings, even if that is a compromise to what we would like and expect. It's definitely better than the days of the BNSF. I sent an email to council that essentially said that five years after our last MetroLink meeting, we basically are still at the same point. A very expensive four-mile project that as a taxpayer, I would have trouble supporting. As a resident, I welcome pieces of, and as someone concerned with safety, I am saddened. We definitely need to change how trains can access the compressed gas facility. We definitely need a quiet zone. We also definitely need best-practice safety measures between crossings consisting of contiguous sound walls for residential areas and effective connecting fencing elsewhere. One important thing I didn't address in my email is the FRA 2005 Train Horn Rule. This is a rule established after MetroLink began operating in our city, which required a significant and defined increase of horn use, as well as establishing the steps necessary to create quiet zones nationwide. It may be better called the 2005 Train Crossing Rule, since that is what is really addressed. The premise of the rule is that safety is greatly enhanced when train engineers blow horns approaching all crossings and continue until they have passed through. In places with no audible cross warnings, crossing warnings, and no crossing arms, which constitute about half the crossing in America, this makes sense. But blowing a deafening horn approaching a crossing with physical arms down, already audible clangers, as well as flashing lights in residential San Dimas really serves no purpose, but does negatively impact hundreds, if not thousands, of residents and pets. Even the coyotes howl when the horns are blown. These horns are not oriented to the track in front of the train, but outwards at a 30-degree angle to directly blast into the houses they are passing by. So quiet zones make sense with the otherwise mandatory horn blowing. But this makes safety measures between crossings even more critical, and that is what is entirely missing. Interestingly, the light rail system, which is not regulated by the FRA, gets it. MetroLink doesn't, though they have a much greater noise and safety impact. Most heavy commuter rail was not introduced into already established communities and coexisted with active mainline freight lines, so many of the mitigation measures already existed or were not needed. Unlike what happened in San Dimas, the lack of community safeguards and mitigations is a stain that MetroLink needs to fix as they come back to communities to expand their network and introduce more dangerous simultaneous bi-directional train travel with even more service. I'd like to submit my public comment as well as the expanded email comment for the record.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Gillespie, speaking on MetroLink.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. To follow up on the past gentleman's speech, I live in Charter Oak, Mobile Home Estates. We do not currently have a sound wall behind us, and the thing that concerns me is the safety of the tracks itself. We have a resident, I only know her first name as Kia, K H I A, and she has lost a daughter who was trying to go along the tracks to get from the opposite side of the 57 to our park. The, the report to her was that she got too close or something, and her arm got sucked in between the trains and either got caught in a coupling or something, and it drug her down the tracks and tore her arm off, and she passed away. She also repeated to me, and this is only hearsay on my part, that there was a student at Lone Hill Avenue who was too close, and her backpack got sucked into the train, and she was also injured or killed. I've been assured by Sherry and the gentleman who's here about MetroLink that the part that goes under the 57 and other parts that are accessible to people trying to get through, being students from the high school or the junior high to cut across, because we have them also coming through our park, is that it's going to be fenced off better, and hopefully this will not happen again. But it's something that, you know, is right now a problem and needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards that have been turned in.
Is there anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Rolander?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. First of all, we had a great three events last week with the, Mitchell, thank you, with the car show, with National Night Out, and the San Dimas Birthday. So I call that a trifecta of a success, and very nice for our city. I just wanted to make a comment on Other Business Section Three relating to the double-track, quiet zone, and sound walls. I remember years ago, there was a discussion by the city council in regards to who was responsible if there was an accident at one of these intersections. And my memory, it may have failed me, but my memory was that the city could be held totally liable. They would need to purchase insurance, and at that time, Lloyds of London was the only insurer. And my recollection was it was about $20,000 per crossing, and at that time, we had five crossings. So my question when you debate this tonight is, I'm all in favor of quiet zones, sound walls, to help these people that have put up with this for years. But I also want you to think about who's ultimately responsible when, God forbid, there will be an accident. Is it Metro? Are they going to self-insure? Or is it ultimately the city will be held responsible? And that's of concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing none, we'll go into the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion. I understand Councilman Ebner would like to make a...
I would just like to request just an explanation for the public, as well as the council, to jog our memories about Item Three, the 24-month extension proposed for a tentative track map, and maybe explain where that is, and...
I believe the best way to handle this will be just to go ahead and get the explanation, and then we'll...
Sure.
...entertain a motion for all for... Entertain a motion for all four.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This particular request, just to provide a little bit of background, consists of a 12-unit subdivision project that was approved by the city council back in August of 2018. What happened shortly after that, as part of the overall process for the approval, after the council approved it, they were required to go back to DPRB to iron out all the architectural details that they were waiting, that was pending approval of the final map. So they got final approval to move forward by the DPRB in August of 2019. Subsequently, a few months later, they started the submission of construction plans to the Building and Safety Department, with the house plans being submitted in November of 2019, and the final map being submitted January of 2020. The city issued corrections. And there was a couple of issues between the applicant, which is a property owner, and the project manager slash developer in regards to moving the project along. There were some delays caused by, I guess, not being in agreements with both parties. And November of 2021, the project manager withdrew from the, from the, from the project, therefore left the applicant property owner to pretty much start anew with the project. They had to hire a new engineer and everything to kind of pick up where the old project manager left off. Since hiring the new project manager, they were able to resubmit a new set of plans to Building and Safety. So the project is moving along now at a pace that we are comfortable with. They are nearing completion. And so therefore, this map will expire at the end of this, at the end of this month unless this approval is granted. Staff feels that approval is warranted. We are nearing completion of the project. Again, it's a 12-unit subdivision residential development, which went through various processes in regards to approval through DPRB, Planning Commission, and City Council. And it's a project that staff is, is proud and stands behind. And approval of this extension will allow them to finish the project. Under the government, government constitution they are applying for, they can actually request up to six years of the extension. It's obviously discretionary. They are asking for two years. And again, we think it's warranted to allow them sufficient time to finish the map, get it recorded, and, and get the project construction started.
Thanks for that explanation.
Any further?
I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment about one of the items, please? I just wanted to thank the council and the staff for item number four. It's taken a while to be able to finally get a generally accepted government auditing standard audit off the ground, absent peer review is noted in the agreement proposal. But I look forward to this report. And I also thank the staff for the time and the consideration for the subject, for what you've selected to audit. I think that's a meaningful use of time and city resources. And I look forward to the recommendations that come out of that. And I hope that the city sees, you know, not just the public sees, the transparent approach that the staff and the city and the council are taking with this, but then also the recommendations that I think hopefully will lend itself to better improvements in process and serve the public better. So thank you.
We'll move on into other business. Consider and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with HDL companies to provide business license compliance and operations management, management and consulting services. Michael O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. The following item for council consideration is to authorize the city manager designated to enter into an agreement with HDL companies to provide business license compliance, operations management, and consulting services in a contract form approved by the city attorney. The city of San Dimas currently utilizes in-house staff and the Excel permitting software program to conduct business license operations and maintain records. The decision to seek authorization and entering an agreement with HDL companies came to fruition after careful consideration and analysis of where we are at with our current business license operations and considering the long history of outstanding service, HDL has provided the city with sales tax and property tax services. HDL has over 200 city business license tax departments in California and has intimately worked with business license staff across multiple jurisdictions, which has enabled them to extrapolate the best practices from these experiences and provide innovative solutions and industry-leading support options for their clients and the taxpayers they administer. We believe that transitioning to HDL will address a number of issues we're currently facing with our business license operations. Issues such as staff time being dedicated to this process, which includes a number of time-consuming manual processes that have arisen due to consistent costly updates that need to be performed in the Excel software system to achieve the necessary reporting and invoicing needs of our oper, I'm sorry, of our operation have come about due to law changes, COVID restrictions, and system capabilities that were unable to be performed during the original implementation. The cost to make necessary updates that are possible was quoted at $14,520. It would still leave items unaddressed. Future items that may arise that would cause other reporting requirements will require a consultant as well as, and are costly. Business license operations also require tedious time-consuming work by our staff whose talents could be better used for other tasks within our, their respective departments. Tasks such as printing, packaging, and mailing business license certificates renewals, producing and uploading invoice renewals files for online billing, cashiering for in-person or mail-in payments, sending a code enforcement officer to inspect and notify businesses that need to address their overdue business license renewals, scanning and filing business license application information, searching for new businesses that may be operating without a license, and then lastly, educating and informing the public about the business license process would all be conducted by HDL. Code compliance in terms of business license operations would only be left with having to issue administrative citations if a business has ignored the notifications for payments initiating the citation process. Once the implementation process with HDL is completed, all calls for business license questions or services such as payment remittances would be done through HDL via phone, internet, or postage. Residents would also have access to the public HDL portal, which would allow a resident to verify that a business has an active business license, along with the ability to view other public information. The contact information website links would be available at City Hall and on the city's website. If the member, if a member of the public reaches out directly to staff or via an avenue such as email or MySanDimas, their questions or concerns would be forwarded to HDL unless the issue is a matter of illicit or legal activity outside of operating without a business license that should be addressed by the city or the sheriff's department. The overall cost for HDL services would be $16 a license, along with a one-time implementation cost of $5,000 and a one-time 40% cost for any collections that resulted from business license fees they collected from identifying businesses that were operating without a license or having reported information incorrectly that results in an increase in fees collected. Based on the current number of licenses, the $16 per license would equate to approximately $35,200 per year. HDL historically has generated between 10 and 20% of additional revenues, which based on current revenues result in at least $50,000 of additional revenues, which would more than cover the costs, especially when you consider the savings the city would obtain from not having to produce, package, and deliver licenses, renewals, certificates, and notices, as well as eliminating what would be an unnecessary license user with Excel. HDL is able to accomplish this by utilizing their extensive databases of information that they are able to cross-reference against the current business license information, allowing them to easily flag businesses that are non-compliance. Staff time that was once dedicated to business license operations would be transferred to other financial and code-related activities, which will allow for enhanced efficiencies and operational redundancies that would ultimately strengthen our ability to serve the public. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I had just had two questions of Michael. First question is, so this is all about business licenses and then code compliance. Just wanted to make sure that the code compliance aspect of it, is that limited just to businesses and not residential code compliance?
Yes, unless that residence is operating a business out of their home where they would need to inspect to see if they are currently conducting a business there for license purposes. But they would not be handing the actual citation process out, it'll be done by our code compliance. But as far as inspections or delivering notices to comply with business license, that would be done through HDL.
All right, great. The other question I had was if a business or a resident wants to make a request, complaint, whatever, or, or just has a question on how to, how to get a business license, that, all that kind of stuff, are they going to be calling HDL directly? And what happens if they call the city instead?
Yeah, so all the licensing processing would be done through HDL. So we would refer them to contact HDL. Obviously, we still know some of the processes. So if it's just a matter of answering a question, we can still do that. But we would direct most residents to go through HDL. They would be taking over the entire process. But they're more than happy to, to contact us if need be. If we're having any issues with HDL, they can let us know.
So if they like enter something through MySanDimas, then the staff would forward it? And then the staff would somehow find out from HDL what, what happened and?
Yeah, we would, we would get feedback back from HDL and anything that we've sent or forwarded them through MySanDimas or email.
And you feel that's going to be as quick a turnaround or better turnaround than we typically have?
Because of the staff size they have dedicated to this operation, I think they're going to get better customer service and more timely. Certificates will be delivered faster, renewals will go out on a more timely basis, and they have more people dedicated to it than, than we do. So they're able to do more.
All right, thank you.
Michael, I've had the opportunity to experience HDL's business license portion when I was more involved with my wife's adventure or her business. In my experience with that, I believe Glendora uses it, and it's a branded phone number. So when I called, they answered like it was the City of Glendora Business License Center or whatever. Is that consistent with what it would be here, a resident would call and they essentially would, even though it's HDL, the branding is that of the city?
Yes, it should be the same.
Okay. Okay, all right, that's all I have. And then renewals then could be done electronically, applications could be done electronically?
Yeah, so right now, we do have an outside vendor through Bank of the West that you can go online and to process your payments online. That would just now go through HDL's service, but you'll be able to do all those things and including debit card through HDL's website.
Okay, so I just, I think it's great. I'm happy to see the city moving in this direction. The coolest thing about it actually is that the renewals, you get a little thing in the mail and you get an email. And then the actual business license is delivered in like a PDF. So the business actually owner or the applicant gets it rather fast and is pretty streamlined. So I, I appreciate it and I think it's going to serve our community well. So thank you.
Sir Brian, I have two questions for you. The first is, what other companies did you consider and what was it about this company that select them?
There was, there's really only one other company that does this process as well. Ultimately, we went with HDL because of their familiarity with a number of cities. I, I've worked with a number of cities, I've used HDL, and they came highly recommended by some other agencies I spoke with, and they're utilized locally. But also, we've dealt with them sales and property tax-wise for a number of years. We know their customer service, we know the level of care they, they take with our, with their product and their service. So we're very comfortable that they will make a smooth transition and be a benefit to the city.
And are there any concerns or issues or risks that you wanted to raise to the city council before moving forward that you feel is necessary to call out?
I think the only challenge is if the day comes where we decided not to utilize HDL anymore, to be able to gather all that data again, then put it into Excel or whatever other license program we need to do. We do have a provision in there to have 60 days during transition. If there was forever reason to break in the agreement that we could get that information and restart doing it ourselves, that's the only thing I think would be a challenge if we had to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Eric?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to highlight that I appreciate one of the items you touched on, which is the customer service level that HDL brings. I know a lot of these, not a lot, but some of these contractors lose sight of the fact that they're in the customer service business on occasion. And because they're not associated with the city, they kind of feel like they have a little bit more free rein to provide a little less than stellar customer service. So I was very refreshed to hear that we took that in consideration and we have experience with them and they provide excellent customer service to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mayor, if there are no further questions, then I would move that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with HDL as described in the staff report and, and discussed.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. We'll move on to discussion and direction regarding initiating multiple municipal code text amendments for commercial outdoor dining areas. Lewis?
Yes, hello, Mayor and members of the council again. Again, this item is a discussion about the city's current standards for outdoor dining and also what other standards we use to regulate, such as the, we also have a policy as well for that regulates the use of certain shelters and covers in these outdoor dining areas. Just to provide a little bit of background, oh, and just to confirm, the, our municipal code doesn't have any regulations to regulate outdoor dining. However, we do have an outdoor dining policy and also the membrane structure policy that is applicable to both residential and non-commercial zones, and is also applicable to the use of material in outdoor dining areas. Just to provide a little bit of information on the current outdoor dining policy, the policy they have in place, it includes standards related to pedestrian access, maintenance, and procedures for occupying public roadway. It also exempts parking requirements for outdoor dining areas that provide seating for 12 or people or less. So that's what we've been using in the past to allow restaurants to have outdoor dining areas in their, as part of their facilities in operation. We also have the membrane structure policy. And again, this is applicable to both residential and commercial zones. So we use it to regulate what type of structures that can be used in outdoor dining areas. Just to provide a little further background on this, the original policy, when it was approved for the use of membrane structures, didn't really forbid the use of membrane structures in outdoor dining areas, but it didn't really reflect this. It allowed these type of uses and materials in conjunction with a special use permit, a temporary use permit. In 2008, the San Dimas Wine Shop installed the temporary cabana membrane structure without city approval. Subsequently, to be notified, the business owner submitted an application to DPRB and it was denied because it was not in compliance with the policy. They were asking to use that temporary membrane structure for several months, which the policy only allows it for use in association with a temporary use permit, which is typically three days. They appealed the DPRB's decision to city council. City council upheld the DPRB's denial because it didn't comply with the current standards in place. As part of that meeting, the city council also directed staff and the planning commission to review and potentially update the membrane structure policy. As I mentioned before, the preference was that for outdoor dining areas, more appropriate and permanent structures be used as opposed to these membrane structures. However, the policy did not reflect this. As part of that update that staff worked on with the planning commission and ultimately came back to the city council and approved it, that policy was updated in 2009. And those revisions required that permanent shade or shelter structures be used in conjunction with outdoor dining areas and require that all materials and design be compatible with the primary building. So that's what we've been using for restaurants. In response to COVID-19 and to comply with county health orders, orders, the city permitted the use of temporary outdoor dining areas for these restaurants to allow them to stay viable and stay open. These temporary structures obviously don't comply with their current policy because they were approved in, essentially in emergency order. They don't comply with the materials, also because they were used, they were approved through the order and as a temporary use. They don't comply with our policy and building code requirements. They are still in place. However, they don't have to comply with their standards, but they do have to be maintained. And the city has been doing a good job in regards to seeing on top of those to make sure that they are maintained in appropriate manner. There is no set timeframe as to when these temporary structures will be taken down as we start in the middle of the pandemic. However, if a business owner wanted to convert one of these temporary outdoor dining areas, they would have to go through the process that we have in place, and they would have to comply with all city and building code policies and requirements, including providing ADA access. So that is, those are the current standards we have in place right now. So we do have mechanisms in place to allow restaurants to have outdoor dining areas. Just with the staff wanted to provide an update in regards to what we have in place. And if the council chooses, provide direction whether they want us to explore any changes to the current policies we have in place right now. That concludes staff's report.
Questions?
No, I think, thanks for bringing this back and providing an update. I think, I think the council, you know, there's interest, I think the council needs to have a discussion on whether or not this is something we want to continue to allow post-pandemic. And I also. And I also think that, you know, maybe there's some discussion around the framework of it now and later, because I think during the pandemic, we saw some businesses just quickly respond, threw up a tent, threw out some tables and made it work. But if you go to neighboring communities, you see some businesses have embraced this and it's a way of life now. They have no intention on going back. And I wonder if we did get some framework around this that perhaps we could set some standards and albeit that the property owners, wherever they're renting or wherever they're leasing from would be on board and the standards are acceptable as it relates to parking and otherwise, that this would work, that we can have a pathway for people to do to do this and retain it. But I'm one of five, so that's what my thoughts are.
John?
Whatever changes we make, we should be encouraging outdoor dining and making it possible for restaurants to do that. I don't really have any, but we want things to comply with building codes. There are, because of the pandemic, a lot of temporary, and some of them are nice membrane structures, tents, what have you, but there can be problems with them. For for one thing, some of them, you have to step off of a curb, whether it's in a shopping, probably in a shopping center in most cases, and then you're at the level of the of the parking lot where the membrane structure is. So what's the ADA accessibility there? And for my mind, what we should do is wherever they're going to do this, because we're going to be exiting the emergency authorization, they should have a platform or whatever you want to call it that is built and built well out into the right of way or the parking lot, the parking spaces to provide that kind of access. And I think this is being done all over the state, local communities, you know, you could just, we all see this in Claremont, Laverne, other places. And so, yeah, we want to do that. I think we also want to be flexible on how these things are constructed. So for example, when we did the downtown improvements, one of the things in the policy about downtown outdoor dining is the fences have to all be exactly the same. And I don't think that needs to be the case when, if a fence does the job it's going to do and staff is satisfied with it, then a fence could have, it doesn't have to be just a straight wrought iron, maybe it has some design on it. Not only that, but instead of a fence, you could easily have planters. I've seen everything from planters to K rail, basically protecting outdoor dining that might extend into the right of way or just beyond the edge of the curb there. So the bottom line is flexibility, meet building code standards and if, and encourage it. And we have to take everything into consideration, parking, all that kind of thing. But there are some cases where extending a restaurant out into the right of way where the parking spaces are now and taking up those two parking spots is actually of a greater benefit than those parking spots would be because it provides visibility, it can make the the business more successful and just more vibrancy to the street scene.
I will say along those lines that, you know, when I lived in downtown for a year on Spring Street, they ate a lane to go into like parks and dining and benches. And it seemed like a good idea, but all it really did is squeeze traffic down and the homeless took over those areas. So I say that to say that when we have this discussion, I agree with a lot of what council member Ebner said, but I also think applicability to proper area and placement has to be considered. I would not support eating parking spaces on Benita for those businesses. There's enough sidewalk frontage, for example, there, and I think the council have passed, you know, regulated that out to a degree. But on the flip side, and the right of way, that's another consideration. On the other hand, you know, a shopping center like where Applebee's or Las Palmas is, or maybe even perhaps the Via Verdi Shopping Center, I think there's opportunities on private property that could be permissible, you know, and we could be flexible with the parking requirement or places where we don't see a negative parking impact already. And there's opportunity maybe to expand and grow the footprint of some of those businesses, like La Via Kitchen comes to mind. I know for a fact they participated and have had some outdoor dining. I think Las Palmas has tried and they put theirs out in front. But I would love, you know, like, like John talked about, you know, I would love to see an actual patio or something more robust, maybe in front with, you know, whether it's fenced in and something decorative and inspirational for that particular business, you know? And it's not going to negatively impact parking and other areas. I think it's great. I think we should have a roadmap for that. I just, it's disheartening to me to think that, you know, we've watched some businesses nearly go out of business, change their business models, even figure out how to deliver food outside and thrive. And and now, you know, I think just a week ago or so, or two weeks ago, they're talking about mask mandates again. And we're about to get into fall and flu season and everything else is going to happen. So I don't think this is going to go away this fall, but maybe next fall. And it'd be great to have some provisions and some direction for businesses. And I think it would also perhaps be inspirational to the property owners if they actually know that the city's open to allowing them to do something and expand some square footage. I mean, there's implications both for capacity as well as rents for landlords that might be worth their time as well.
This kind of thing can be contagious, like you're saying. If somebody, and it does, if it's along the street, and I'm not saying necessarily going out into Benita, I'd be open to seeing the proposal if it was was proposed. But that kind of increased street visibility of people doing stuff is, is, I think, beneficial.
I, I am absolutely in favor of of outdoor dining. I think the, the citizens of the city have made that quite evident that that's what they want as well. So obviously, as you look to the other cities that have kind of kept their temporary outdoor dining situations in their, especially in the downtown corridors and like Glendora, Glendora spent a lot of money on the the platforms, the temporary platforms that go into their parking spaces. And I will say they look, for being a temporary platform, they look fantastic compared to what other cities have put together. But still, to me, that leaves a lot to be desired in the aesthetics realm, the temporary structures. So whatever it may be, private property, by all means, I think there's a huge opportunity for us to expand our outdoor dining opportunities on private property. If perhaps there was a place in some sort of capacity that's not on private property, maybe more on public property, if we wanted to try a pilot program using those temporary structures for a specified period of time, just to test the viability and the desirability of outdoor dining in that area. And that would also give us an opportunity to test the potential negative impacts on that. And then give it a specified period of time where we then revisit that and decide whether that's a permanent feature that we're willing to entertain. But like Ryan was saying, I think my, my goal with outdoor dining would be to move less to temporary structures and those platforms that are, that are raised and and just making it work with what's there and more toward an actual amenity that's a part of the, the business.
Eric, do you have anything?
The only lens that I would be most interested in looking at this is through a competitive lens, ensuring that when diners are thinking of options, that they feel that what we offer is just as good as other cities nearby to keep more of our tax dollars here. And then additionally, businesses that are thinking of opening up a restaurant here, they feel that there is a reason to do so here. So that's really, I think, the thing that I'm most interested in. And all my comments were represented by the other comments here, so I have nothing further to add.
You know, when the pandemic first started, we did have businesses starting to fold pretty quick. So the city reacted right, right away and I want to thank the staff for being very open minded to that. But one of the things is, as Louis talked about, is the membrane situation. After a while, the easy ups started to look considerably tattered. And so I would hope that when we start looking at membranes, we start looking at something more permanent and more, more, you know? I think it, when we talk about private property, we really can't get too awful far into it. But then we also have to consider, or someone has to consider, maybe the property owner or something, is their neighbors, you know? Businesses next to them, if they're taking away parking spaces and stuff like that. I'm 100% supportive of outside dining. I think it's, it's saved many, many more businesses than it hurt. And I think that everybody on this council recognizes it. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are doing something, but I just want to make sure that, that we recognize the fact that there's a lot of, lot of different people, a lot of different places that people want, you know, to do outside dining. And, and they're right when they talk about Claremont and, and Glendora and even Laverne. If you remember straight, Laverne's got north, south streets. They had no problem closing down D Street and all those restaurants were able to, to work and function and they kept them all open. We have East West Streets, which is a thoroughfare on Benita, you know? We couldn't do very much and we have to keep some of those things into account. So, but I think, and I can remember seeing lots of places like Roadies, Posetos, Sweet Savory, they survived because of, of the outside part, outside dining. In fact, I would like to see us do something like, one of the things that were talked about was planters, but it, but it's okay. We had a prior planning director who was just death, death on lights. Well, it's okay, it's dark outside, it's okay to have lights on some of these fences or something like that downtown. People like to sit around and, you know, let's see, where's my, where's my drink? I can't find it, you know? So I would really, I really like us to look at that, the lighting, you know, because I'm sure that that'll be a part of it, that people will ask questions on it. But I, I appreciate the fact that you guys did what you did and that you heard Ryan when he was talking and asking for this to come back. And thank you and let's keep working at it because I think we all know that this is not going away and people enjoy it. That's what we're in the business to do, is make people enjoy it and have a safe and relaxing time. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, then I would move that we direct staff to develop, let me think about this, move that we direct staff to develop a proposed municipal code that would establish standards in addition to the policy that the council adopted as merchants and the community expressed interest. And then maybe before we, we put the cart before the horse, before we do that, maybe bring back some proposed standards that staff feels is appropriate for commercial establishments for consideration of the council. And then following that, we can consider an ordinance that would demonstrate to the community that the city is open to this idea. I think that's the one thing that, just as a comment outside of the motion, I think that's the one thing that residents, businesses want to know, is that are we open to it? If they're going to put the money up to do it, if they're going to make a capital improvement, they're going to be, are we going to approve it? My goal for this exercise would for the business owners to know and the community members to know that we not only did it, but we have expressed in code a willingness to do it and there's a path for it.
I would second the motion, as I understand it. So the motion is to ask staff to come back with some ideas on, on what they want to include in a policy or ordinance and how those two would play. Maybe you've got an ordinance and a policy that have certain amounts of things. And then at a later date, we would consider an ordinance to implement.
Absolutely.
Sure. For our staff's clarification, I did hear your comments, thank you for all the comments. Is there, we can certainly put together some options and bring those back. Is there anything specific that you would like us to look at? For example, further parking reductions or park, park these areas differently? I mean, these are options that we can bring back, but I just want to make sure that if there's something specifically you want us to look at and we can get that specific direction.
I would say, you know, just hearing the council, one thing that stuck out to me, council member Weber's comments about, you know, permanent, not interested in temporary. And I think that, you know, as we look at that and then council member Ebner's comments about, you know, some flexibility in terms of, you know, fences or planters. I think parking impaction is something that needs to be discussed by council and that's going to be unique consideration, I think, to each site that might be interested in doing this. And I think some language, you know, that gives acknowledgement to public versus private property. I think the implications are different as it relates to public right of ways or Glendora, for example, by, I guess now it's a stubborn mule, it used to be T. Phillips, actually shut down east-west traffic and then put outdoor dining there. But all of that was funded by the city in the way I understand it. So I mean, those are, to me, those are two different scenarios. And I don't even know that I would consider that necessarily outdoor dining per se because it's actually more of a public improvement that just happens to go as long with people sitting down to eat, not really, the way I understand it, it's not really deeded to anybody, any member of the public can sit down wherever they want. So I think that's a different use than maybe what we're talking about, which is actually connecting it to something.
And I think what I, what I hear Ryan saying, interpreting it anyway, is that if we're going to do public dining in what is now a parking lot or street, we need to know what that means. So right now, we can all visualize, oh, I've been there, I've seen that. But like I say, I've seen, seen it in some cities, L.A., where they put K rails so that it's really protected, others where it's not quite the same kind of traffic and it's not taking away traffic lanes, it's just a parking, I shouldn't say just, but it's a parking space, they'll do it with a platform and planters and that works. So, but we need to know what that means, I think, as part of, part of deciding.
And the last thing, very important, is we know people can drink iced tea in the planter area, but as it relates to A B C, how does that apply? And how does that work if you have a business that has a liquor, wine or other license? And, you know, as it relates to proximity of wherever that outdoor dining space may be, because I, just thinking aloud, I mean, this is like an afterthought for some businesses. It wasn't the way they looked at it. But is there a way to attach, you know, their business or license or serving to whatever that area is and allow them to be able to do that? So.
You know, Laverne has a restaurant called Cafe Allegre, where peoples are on one side of the sidewalk and the other side of the sidewalk and people actually walk down the middle of it. I remember about three, four, maybe five years ago, I happened to be walking down that, that little street or little sidewalk area, and there's this guy named John Ebner sitting there having, you know, a meal with his wife. And then I remember John said, God, wouldn't it be nice if we could do something like this? And, you know, just, those are the ideas that they had over there and I'd like us to start thinking outside that box and stuff like that. And John said, God, how do we get something like this? And I just happened off to be flippant, said, John, that's between you and I and the rest of the council. So, you know, but you have to have an idea and you guys are the, you know, our source of ideas. But, you know, a lot of people go there and eat and they've, people walk right by them and they're still eating.
And they're drinking, they're drinking wine.
And they're drinking wine right on the sidewalk.
On the street side of the.
On the street side and stuff like that. So, you know, there's, there's probably a lot that, you know, the five of us don't really even begin. This is a whole new threshold for us and, but I think you know what we want, you know what we're looking for.
Yes, yeah.
So, super, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for those comments.
We call the votes.
Okay. Anybody else say anything to say?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify something that you said in the original motion, you said to come back before we do, come back with some standards that staff feels are appropriate for commercial establishments and then consider the ordinance. Is it your intent that we come back and outline the standards and then an ordinance?
Right. Don't come back with the ordinance. We'll figure out the ordinance after we got that.
Perfect.
But the gist of it is it's footloose, we're going to have a dance and it's going to be awesome. All right. This city council is going to let that happen.
Let's take a vote on that dance.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries 5-0 and it sounds like we're going to have some outside dining.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a discussion and consideration of direction related to the Metro, MetroLink, Lone Hill Avenue and White Avenue, Two White Avenue Double Track Project Quiet Zones. Sherry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Item is in regards to a proposed railroad project which is south of Arrow Highway called the Metro Lone Hill to White Double Track Project. This is a completely separate project from the Gold Line Project, which is currently going on in the downtown San Dimas. This item is provided with a recommendation to review and file for future discussion for a number of reasons. The project originally started in 2016, 2017, so it's been a long time since councils had a chance to review it. Also, some of the council was not here at that time, so I'd like to try to bring them up to current with this project. And finally, Metro will be conducting public outreach meetings in September in both San Dimas and Laverne. San Dimas is tentatively scheduled for September 1st at the Community Building. Residents will be able to attend these meetings and make some comment, which council may wish to consider. With that, we'll begin with the project scope. Here's an overview of the discussion, project scope. Metro will provide an overview of their project and answer any questions that council may have at that time. Then we'll go back to some city-specific items, talk about the specific crossings in the city of San Dimas and some of the benefits and potential impacts. And then again, we'll touch base on the public outreach. With that, we'll start with Metro. Mr. Brian Baldurama is the project manager for Metro and is here to give his presentation.
Thank you. My name is Brian Baldurama. I'm the Deputy Executive Officer for LA Metro's Program Management Division. And under that division, we oversee all the regional rail efforts for the entire county. That is, we oversee all capital improvement projects in that 300-plus miles of railroad right-of-way that LA Metro owns and other operators such as MetroLink, Amtrak, even freight rail operate on. So for this particular project, LA Metro is taking the lead and has since project inception and will continue to do so as we continue to seek funding for the construction of these improvements. LA Metro works with the partners shown on the screen, which is both cities, Laverne and San Dimas, and we work regularly with MetroLink through our professional consultant team of Moffitt and Nickel. As project agencies that are involved with this project that we require approval from, it's anywhere from LA Department of Transportation to the California Public Utilities Commissions to LA County because of the unincorporated space in some of the crossings and locations and down to specific locations like the freeway where we need Caltrans oversight approval as well as Fairplex, Gold Line, and the city of Laverne that, where they have a particular private crossing. And in this graphic for the project location, highlighted in blue is the 3.9 miles of double tracking that is being proposed from Lone Hill to White. And all of the circles identify the quiet zone ready improvements at each of the crossings from Valley Center all the way to Fulton Road. Now, for this corridor, this is one of MetroLink's busiest corridors of their system, but within that, we're looking at 30-plus trains that they have on this particular line in addition to a handful of trips that are taken from the freight rail operator in this location. Knowing that what this project could provide, your city and the adjacent city, we looked at beyond what the double tracking needs were and how we can push this project forward through the environmental process by looking at items that were important to your residents. Through that process, we identified that this is first and foremost safety improvement project to provide all of the necessary infrastructure that is missing at your crossings today and folded them into all of the double tracking improvements that were initially planned for the project. What this project does is if you consider a one-lane roadway that has bidirectional movement, you need to pull off to the side in order to make the traffic flow. It's no different for rail. So what this does is as a line reliability project by allowing the double track, God forbid there's an actual incident, but it allows, as that incident is being reviewed, for slow traffic to continue and move people where they need to go regardless of the time and place of the incident that occurred. Of course, during that, it's a much slower effort, but the system does not shut down where it does today in a single-track situation. What it does allow is by you having that bidirectional movement, you can move trains more efficiently, not necessarily increasing the demand. That would be a capacity-driven project and this is a line reliability improvement project. There are two completely different types of projects. A capacity-driven project is constructed to avoid a pinch point in the system that allows for a larger increase of traffic to come on that system. This particular project, through all of the rail modeling that has been developed by MetroLink, is not on that list. It is to improve time and improve safety for this area. And one of the ways that we can do that is added improvements of quiet zones and I'll touch on that shortly. Where we are on this project is we've completed our 65, 60% final design milestone. We're going to be receiving comments within the next 30 days from the project stakeholders, incorporate those comments into a 90% and continue moving to a shovel-ready level. As I have moved this project to a shovel-ready level, I can show the state, federal, and other part, funding partners, that how close we are to being able to put people to work for construction. And that's been a successful element for other metro projects that, once we've demonstrated that shovel-ready level, that we got the available funding or the gap, rather, of construction funding that we're looking for to move that project to the next phase. These are some images of elements that we're talking about where I would need secondary approvals from, where it's the SR 57, the Aeropress Facility, which is Union Pacific, the county, which has to deal with the deep ravine, and then grade crossings, which have oversight from all of you. This is another look at the project as to where the double tracking is being placed and the location of private and public crossings in this area. Now, as a historical content, one of the biggest concerns that came out through the environmental process was noise and vibration. So the noise and vibration analysis began in 2017. Through direct feedback from your residents, we increased the number of noise receptors that were initially planned in the area to get a larger data representation of exactly what's going on in the individual area. What we're able to see through that analysis, following the California Environmental Quality Act requirements, was that the project did provide an additional impact beyond the existing conditions that were today. So on record, what Metro did is by 2019, we went back to our board, identified all of those records of what the direct impacts were and came up with a proposal of, do we move forward with sound walls or do we move forward with quiet zone-ready corridor? Based on the feedback we got at the time, the residents were willing to support a project that would result in the termination or the silencing of horns in the area. That was the biggest nuisance to them. In order to provide that, we looked at the analysis and out of the two that, design options that were being proposed, quiet zone-ready infrastructure provides the greatest possible mitigation. So in the letter we received as support to our board in 2019, it asked Metro to do two things. To avoid doing the bare minimum and just saying, we checked a box and we fit the minimum requirements for mitigation, so let's include that in the design and move forward and continue to study the initial results in 2017. When we started the final design process, we brought on a separate technical team to assess all of the data that was conducted back in 2017. They poured through it through, using the Federal Rail Administration Guidelines as well as the CEQA Guidelines that were out there and came back with a determination that the findings were sound. The city moved forward with wanting to do an independent analysis of noise and vibration. We took an eight-month pause on the final design process and continued coordination efforts to avoid releasing a final design package to allow the city to conduct their independent study. What is great that came out of those studies is that both our technical team on the final design as well as the independent analysis, both prove that quiet zone-ready infrastructure provides the highest mitigation possible for noise abatement. So we're including all of those elements into the individual project, which increased the project cost approximately by 16 million. Metro will be looking for the funding, not only for that, but the entire project. In addition to that, based on feedback we received, we were asked to increase the locations where that quiet zone-ready infrastructure would be installed. So as compared to the original concept where we're going to go from Lone Hill to White, we moved out in one direction of each of the bookends. So Valley Center on one end and Fulton Road on the other to add all of the quiet zone-ready infrastructure to those as well. This way, when there is an application for quiet zones, that the full effect of the silencing of those horns is felt between Lone Hill and White. What does quiet zone-ready crossing look like? It's through the FRA, an application is applied in order to silence those horns and supported by the California Public Utilities Commission. An example of that is Cataract Avenue. If you're asking what's the difference between existing infrastructure for a safety improvement project and the added infrastructure for a quiet zone, you can see in the direction of travel shown in northbound and southbound where the gate is shown outlined. All of the elements shown in one and two where it's highlighted were additional gates that would be added, so it's a sealed corridor. As well as what's highlighted is the raised median in green, which is additional infrastructure. And then any channelization or additional infrastructure added on a sidewalk would be included as quiet zone-ready infrastructure. And this helps us get people to where we want them to go as well as introducing fences 500 feet in each direction so that their only option is the option we're providing them to cross. Some updates for you that your director was highlighting is upcoming community events. So at the end of the month, we'll start our community event. The day before September 1st, we'll have a virtual event where, for those that are still hesitant to come out in the public, have a place to review all of the same material and to provide us any comments as we're moving forward with the project. And then, just like we did in our previous efforts, all of our email and communication and project web paging is available to provide us any comments. And then, some of that contact information is here via our project webpage, our email, and a hotline where we can receive comments at any time and properly respond within the allotted time. Thank you for hearing me tonight and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I just have one question, maybe more. But as Mr. Salis mentioned and Mayor Morris, on many, many occasions, when we started talking about, you know, the quiet zones and things like that, is the city is required or was told we were required to handle the insurance thing, which is quite expensive. And that, back in the day when we were talking about it, Metro said, no, we, you, the city, are responsible to carry the insurance for that. Is that still true today or is, how does that get handled?
So, one of the things that we did through additional meetings to educate the city's staff was put them in touch with other cities that have already been through this process and have quiet zones approved. So it provided a range of options where some cities have elected not to purchase any additional insurance. Some have went with singular insurance and some have joined, joint venture, our JPA, in order to pool resources so they all pay a portion of the allotted insurance that could be required for individual crossing.
Okay. What city close to us has these quiet zones?
There is Glendale and there's Burbank. Santa Clarita currently has an application. The city of Valmonte is currently going through an application right now. And the city of Los Angeles is looking at their first application.
Thank you. Questions?
So, quiet zones, I understand, can, like the mayor was alluding to, be somewhat onerous on the city and expensive. Is, in addressing the issue of noise abatement when it comes to rail crossings, is a wayside train horn an option and how would that affect insurance and the city's liabilities overall as it relates to the crossings?
So, a wayside train horn is an option when that quiet zone-ready infrastructure is not provided. What happens in this case is through the silencing of the horns in both directions excluding an emergency event. an emergency event, the only noise one hears are the bells at the crossing. So if we looked at, if I go back a couple of slides, that here that shows the range of decibel noise, what you hear today from those horns is the 100 to 110 decibels as soon as they're rang. What happens through the FRA approval process is that noise level would go down to about 70, so what you hear is the pass-by. Even lower than that are the actual bells that are at 40, 45 decibels. So it would be that, the bells ringing at the individual crossing and the pass-by noise from that individual train.
So the quiet-ready crossings wouldn't be able to be equipped with a wayside train horn?
The wayside train horn is just an additional advanced detection device that gets applied to the crossing. All of that advanced detection is already built into the infrastructure that we're proposing for the quiet zone-ready improvements.
So will those be equipped there?
Yes, everything related to advanced warning detection is placed on every crossing.
I think the question is, will those horns be sounding, the wayside horns that are stationary?
No, just the bells.
Just, that's the answer to our question.
Okay. Now, if, so, for instance, in a situation where a crossing is equipped with wayside train horns that do sound, does that count as a quiet zone for the purposes of the insurance? Where the, so the city wouldn't, in that case, need to purchase the additional insurance?
Well, the city has the option to not purchase the additional insurance regardless, based on other cities' experience. It's on a case-by-case basis, and you guys assess your risk as an individual city.
So essentially, that'd be up to us and the city attorney to figure that out?
It's definitely up to all of you.
Okay.
Okay, who is, if you were making these crossings, you know, ready, okay, who's actually paying to have them built?
ALA Metro.
ALA Metro is?
To have everything built for this project.
So when, say the ribbon cutting, when it happens, okay, city has no obligation to pay for anything to make that crossing functional?
In order to, to, after your ribbon cutting, to actually do the implementation, to be considered, all of the infrastructure is there in place with your ribbon cutting. All of that would be included in the project cost that Metro would pay for. There is construction and maintenance agreements that have, that always apply to every improvement project. And in that, roles and responsibilities are provided, and everything is spelled out for after the improvements are in place.
Okay, are there any, are these ready, is there both? Can there be both the sound wall and this ready sound, noise improvements? Can they be the same? Can you have both of them instead of just one, or can you have both?
We're assessing for which would provide the greatest mitigation, and it is, if you were to proceed forward with just a sound wall, you would have the noise reduction to some, to some level, and that was the city's bare minimum approach. By adding all of the quiet zone-ready infrastructure, it exceeds all mitigation requirements that would be needed for the project. In order, so to have both would not be necessary.
Okay, thank you. On the, just on that point, though, in addition to the sound mitigation that the sound walls would provide, we heard from a resident and about the safety aspect. So with the Gold Line, they're installing fences everywhere, walls or fences. With the MetroLink double tracking project, are walls or fences going to be installed all the way along, so there aren't gaps for, except it's streets, obviously, gaps where people could walk onto the right-of-way?
So, we're proposing with the additional track, first and foremost, we need that track space, as well as available space to get trucks in there for daily inspection and continual maintenance. To allow for that, there is gonna be some locations where we're doing our best to avoid any property impacts, so we're gonna include retaining walls where necessary. Anywhere else, it's gonna be the installation of fencing between crossings, so it would be a sealed corridor.
It will be a sealed corridor, okay. And that's some kind of fencing anywhere?
Right. And then what MetroLink does right now, as their oversight review, is they use all of the inspection records that they have to their resources to create hotspots, and if something, or a project area, regardless of where it is, is identified as a hotspot, that entire location has to be sealed.
All right.
Would some type of fencing be up to and including chain link fence?
Yes, so it's like a wire mesh fence that MetroLink has, and only in rare cases is it changed to something more durable, like wrought iron fencing. But it has to be in a location where incidents occur that are clearly above the, like, national or local average.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I think since this all started, I think two people have died on the tracks here in San Dimas, and at least since I've been following it, since I've been elected. When, when we started this discussion a long time ago, there was a lot of members of the community that were here. How long have you been involved with this, with our community?
So, the previous lead where this started, I was their direct supervisor. So as their direct supervisor, I have taken over the project to lead it myself.
Have you attended our meetings and all of our town halls and all the stuff with the?
Yes, I just didn't have to have a speaking role at that time.
Okay, fair enough. One thing you said, if I understand correctly, that putting in the sound mitigation walls coupled with quiet zones, as the mayor talked about, you said would exceed the mitigation, or the minimum mitigation efforts, then? So, one, if we did the quiet zone, it would, it would, I guess, negate the need for sound walls?
Correct.
But we would be going above and beyond than what we needed to do, is, I guess, so it's a fiscal issue, I guess, is the decision not to do both. Is that right?
No, it would be if there is desire to do both, just like any project, we can easily discuss what the project betterments are and what the costs are between the city and ALA Metro.
I would, I'd be interested in that discussion, and I think some other members of the council may be, but the thing is this, if you go and you, and I did, and that's why I'm bringing this up, one of the members of the community that's here, and he spoke out earlier, I know you were present to hear his comments, if you go to their home, and I think some people from MetroLink did in fact go to some people's home and visit some of them, the vibration and the sound that happens, and even the folks who live in the mobile home park, is horrendous, even before the train comes by and blows its horn. And for people, and I've heard all the arguments left and right, you know, people moved there, they chose this, whatever, to me, it doesn't matter. I lived right against the Gold Line tracks, right here, at San Dimas and Benita, just north of Arrow, since 2013, and I can hear that train. I hear it every day when I live there. And you can hear it right now, since we've been in chambers, you can hear this thing passing by. It's very loud. But if you live along the tracks and you visit the people who live along these tracks, just, and you know, because this is what you do, I mean, just the noise alone, hearing it, the rumbling, the roar of that engine, then when it actually passes, you have all of the vibration that happens, and, you know, birds running and all the other stuff that happens when these trains go by, then you start thinking about the impact of the dual track. And is it still, my understanding, that the dual track is still gonna be configured in a way where one track isn't even really gonna have to slow down, it's just going to expeditiously traverse that terrain while another would be on the other side? Is that still the way that's supposed to work? Because I thought there was gonna be, like, we talked about Dodger Game examples, where there was like an express train, so some trains would be flying through there, not really slowing down, while others would be diverted onto the dual track.
Well, when we talk about express trains on any line, all lines for MetroLink are essentially, looking at future planning, would only be able to add one or two round trips of an express train. To get to that second express train trip, it would require a significant amount of infrastructure to allow that to occur during business hours. So it's beyond the cost of what we're looking at for this project. And talking about going additional infrastructure that Metro is proposing, in addition to the quiet zone-ready infrastructure, we are already assessing the technology of, basically, a padding that gets installed at the track level, that absorbs those vibrations, so it reduces the direction that that vibration is felt. So that's just another measure of, of design that we're adding beyond what was proposed in the planning phase.
I appreciate that, and I think, you know, all I'll wrap up in saying is that, you know, I appreciate the openness and willingness to explore implementing both. I don't know if the entire council would feel that way, but to me and the people that I know that live there, and along those tracks, east and west, and that have gone through this process, I think it's relieving to hear that there's an openness and a willingness to explore that possibility. But I also think we should be doing everything we can do to be able to mitigate that. And it's not just the quiet zone, because even if the council at some point decides, "Okay, let's figure out how to do it," and to be clear, I was a proponent, and maybe still a proponent, of the city absorbing some of that risk. As you know, our past mayor was adamant that, he viewed that MetroLink should pick it up, because it's your operation traversing our area. So council's changed, but nevertheless, I do think in terms of infrastructure, it's critically important for the people that have been there, and some people have been there a long time. And when you go and you look at their property, you look at the mobile homes, you look at their foundations, things that they believe, and it's their belief, and I understand there's two sides to every story, but a lot of people do believe that a lot of the cracks that they experience have to do from the long-term vibration effect of the train. Now, I know there was a response to that when that claim was made some time ago when we went through this, and I know Sherri said this is just a receive and file, which is why it should be, but at the end of the day, I do hope that everything is done for those people that live there, because at the end of the day, everybody experiences this. Every day, you hear this train going through the community, and we have schools that, but the tracks, I mean, you literally have students in class, and that was part of the discussion last time when we were going through this, you know, these trains are gonna go, we're gonna intensify usage, we're gonna add more, and it's gonna be loud, you know? And even if we went to the quiet zone, the safety consideration is a concern, and it's troubling to me that people have died, even, and we haven't done anything different. That's the crazy part, right? I mean, nothing's changed, we still have the horns, they're still loud, we did change the horns a little bit, which provided some relief, so thank you for changing engines and stuff like that, which is cool, but at the end of the day, we should do the right thing, and thank you.
I had a couple of clarifying questions. The first thing is, is that when you did your study, it sounds to me like the wall would help mitigate the vibration noise, but you would still be blaring the horn, right? So that's why the quiet zones had a higher risk mitigation. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
So assist with some noise reduction, but because they're isolated locations and it doesn't silence the horns, there's still that difference of where mitigation would be required. Thereby, eliminating the horns, the addition of this infrastructure
Right.
... provides for that mitigation.
Right.
And some cities that have elected to just move forward with the crossing experience, the grade crossing experience, without the double-tracking improvements, have, based on the ones that came to Metro to help with grant applications, we've been unsuccessful for the last 10 years. And the only way we were successful on getting that grant funding is folding it into these double-track improvements to, to increase the amount of benefit that the project could provide, and that's what the funding partners are recognizing.
I think what I'm trying to get at is, the walls mitigate the vibrations, but the reason why the total reduction is better with quiet zones is because you're not blaring the horns. So the question I have is, why are you, why, why was there not a consideration where you build the walls, so that takes care of the vibrations, it mitigates the vibrations? You implement the quiet zones, and then, it seems to me, like, it'd be cheaper just to pay for the insurance than spend $16 million on the infrastructure that would allow you to do the quiet zones. Does that at all seem like an approach that was on the table? Because therefore, in that approach, it seems like you would have, you would spend less money, right? And then you would, you would get both benefit.
It's not an approach because the sound wall doesn't absorb vibration. A sound wall essentially creates reverberation, where that sound hits it and it goes up, instead of at the property level. Based on the technical analysis, it showed a reduction, but not as much of a reduction by the addition of the quiet zone.
I see, so you're saying the quiet zones also not just address the horns, they do address the vibrations as well, because of the infrastructure building?
They do when we add the other component, which is the vibration technology that we're applying to the tracks.
And the vibration technology, that's separate from the padding that you just talked about, correct?
It would be the padding.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm a little confused, because you had said earlier, we were planning on implementing this, and it wasn't part of this proposal, but it is part of the proposal, then?
The padding is, has been added since the conceptual level to address the vibration component. The quiet zones address the noise component.
Okay. The map was a little hard to read, so I'm wondering, it's, is it my understanding that the quiet zones would extend throughout the City of San Dimas, or would it just be at certain points? Because I couldn't really tell if horns would be not blown at all through the City of San Dimas, or it was just in certain points that you had identified in the map.
So, with your efforts and your neighbors' efforts, the, when the two separate applications are applied, a quiet zone corridor would begin at Valley Center
Got it.
... and at Bolton. So there would be no horns that would be allowed
Got it, okay.
... between those two locations.
Okay. I did have a question about the last bullet point, which is, the project would result in increased noise levels at 18 of the 33 residential clusters and affect 164 residences. Could you explain what you mean by that? What does it mean? Why would, if you're having all these interventions, why would you see an increase in noise levels?
That's without them.
Sorry?
Without them.
Without them, got it, okay.
That was the, that is essentially building the need and purpose
I see.
... of the infrastructure that's required.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Sure.
Anything additional? No, I just wanted to, one question. What does the city have to do to change from a quiet zone-ready to operational quiet zone?
We've dealt, it all starts with a notice of intent from the city. Notices of intent are submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission, that can be done during the final design process. With the City of Burbank, that started the process on their own, and then engaged ALA Metro for participation, they were already starting construction when that notice of intent was filed. So, and by the time their project, or the last piece of infrastructure was constructed, and their crossing went live, they had it assessed, and then they got the approval and deemed it a quiet zone-ready crossing. So, we're So we're well into the design process, and then there's a right-of-way process comported before we can go into construction. So as a city, you definitely have about good two years to even file that letter of intent, if desired.
Well, I gotta tell you, filing a letter of intent scares me with Metro.
Oh, no, it's, not to us, it goes to the California Public Utilities Commission.
All right, because I don't think, I don't think Metro's too much here. Okay, and the other question is, or it's not even a question, it's a statement. I live at the top of the hill in Villa Verde, and I can't imagine the people that live along that track, because at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning, that train goes by and the horns are unbelievable. When I can hear it all the way at the top of Villa Verde, every morning, I can't imagine how you guys are going to get rid of this. So I'm hoping that if we enter into this, the first horn we get, you're ready to come out and sit there with us and listen.
No, so just along this corridor, in the city of Montebalo, I myself, it was my, the railroad was my backyard, and now at the hill. So with, even with that distance, it's that, those nighttime horn noises that echo throughout the city. Metro's operation ends at 10:00 PM. Anything heard beyond that is freight rail.
What time do they start?
What time, depending on the line, but some of them start at 6:00 AM. 6:00 AM, they're already deadheading from tail end of the right-of-way back to downtown Los Angeles.
So wait a minute. You're telling me that Metro doesn't run at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning?
They're moving trains from the tail end to get them to Union Station at that, at that time. To get them basically to the heart of the MetroLink operation, to where they need to go throughout the day.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they wish to ask?
Yeah, one more question. So if we were to implement quiet zones, who is it that would maintain that equipment at the crossings? Is that on the city, or is that on MetroLink?
So there's a construction and maintenance agreement between the city and MetroLink, where you define roles and responsibilities, and with all of the agreements that I've seen in the past, there's always a page that has to do with dollars amounts. So it's very clear on what the final price is, as well as everybody's roles and responsibilities. And it changes per crossing.
So I guess that wouldn't theoretically take it off the table that the city would be on the hook for the maintenance for that?
Correct. In all cases, MetroLink does not maintain infrastructure for quiet zones, or for the quiet zone-ready authorization.
Okay, so if we were to, no, I think I understand now. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I have one. So the quiet zones only apply to MetroLink trains, then, so freight trains would still blow their horns at whenever they pass by? Is that correct?
No, it applies to freight as well.
I see, applies to everybody. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for taking the time and coming out and talking to us. I think you cleared up quite a big bit of ambiguity, and we appreciate it. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Sheri, but thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Going back to, towards more of the city-specific items. So while the project is primarily about reliability for the tracks by adding the second track, a lot of the benefits that our residents will see, and the commuters in our town will see, is the safety enhancements at the crossings. The original, as the Metro representative mentioned, the original crossing enhancements, safety enhancements, included four crossings in the city. At the request of the city council, Metro added the fifth crossing, which is on the west side of the project at Valley Center Avenue. And some of the, some of the safety enhancements that it would be added are the quad gates. Actually, I don't have a pointer. So quad gates, where you have a gate, a railroad gate at the entrance, right before the railroad track, and then the gate is an exit gate, right after the railroad tracks, as you're going across it as a, in a vehicle. There'd be pedestrian gates, pedestrian improvements, more an ADA crossing, ADA crosswalk, or ADA sidewalk across the tracks. There'll be a rail to direct pedestrians where to cross at that pedestrian crossing. There'll be a median island, accessibility improvements such as the truncated domes. Also be upgrading of signage and striping at the crossings. So to show you kind of what this looks like, it's kind of hard from this planned view, but if you're looking at a crossing, on the left side, you can see, on the near side of the traffic, it's actually on the far side of the road, so on the right side of the road, you can see the entry gate going down, that's what we normally see in the city, but after you go past the tracks, there's actually a gate on the way down after the tracks. So, and it's actually, it's delayed from, you'll have the near side crossing closed first, and the back, the exit crossing will close slightly after the near side crossing. So what that prevents is, when the gates are down, for a long time, people get frustrated, and they'll try to go around, they'll try to go opposite the gate, around the closed grate, and do the crossing, and that's been a problem. So having the quad gates prevents people from actually going around one of the downside gates. On the, on the right side is a image of a pedestrian gate. So there's actually a pedestrian gate that comes down and stops pedestrians from crossing. Right now, at most of our crossings, there is no pedestrian gate, that pedestrians are controlled by the vehicle gate, or in most instances. So this one, in this alignment, you have a pedestrian gate, you can see on the, you can see the rail, you can see the detectable truncated domes, you can see, there's also, as with, there's also an exit gate to the right of the entry gate. So people that are on the crossing can get through even if the gate is down to block pedestrians. So there's just a couple of the improvements. Trying to go through some of the particular crossings, this is the Valley Center Crossing. This one was added, again, at the request of council. There's quite a bit of improvements here for safety purposes and to prevent having to take private property for the safety, to make room for the safety improvements. So right now, Valley Center is a two-lanes northbound, two-lanes southbound. Proposal is to actually make it a one-lane northbound, one-lane southbound, and to move that easterly curb line to make room for the crossing, the pedestrian crossing. The existing curb line is, I don't have this on, let me, still not getting it. So, oh, but the existing curb line is actually right on that, I guess, the hatching area on the, the top of your screen, you can see the little pool there, there's a hatching area. The, the existing curb line is right there. They're looking at moving the curb line out to, out further to the, to the west. So you can see that there. They're also looking at adding the pedestrian improvements at this crossing. So this is, this is actually a joint jurisdictional crossing, it's, it's shared with LA County. And LA County has, from the existing curb line, easterly curb line, for the majority of the crossings. So the vehicular traveled way is within the LA County's jurisdiction. And they have attended all of the quiet zone diagnostic meetings, or the diagnostic meetings. Here's a Lone Hill Avenue crossing. Some of the safety measures are actually, the median is actually being extended to prevent people from cutting through, or going around the down gates. This one does not have a quad gate in this direction, so in the northbound direction, there is no exit gate, but they will be adding an exit gate in the southbound direction. And then you have your pedestrian improvements as well. So there are some impacts to these, this is Brighton Court up here, there are some impacts to Brighton Court that we're working through with the, with LA Metro. This is Cataract Avenue, this is one of those crossings that's going to actually have the four quad gates, so they'll each have an exit gate in both directions. And then they'll be extending the median on the south side, this will impact the development here, they'll, they'll now become a right turn, right in, right out at this driveway. This is San Dimas Avenue. This does not have the quad gates, but there are safety improvements and the median's being extended. There's also signing, signage and striping improvements that will be added as part of this project. The initial improvements will be part of the project, paid for as part of the project. The city will be responsible, regardless of whether it's a quiet zone or not, we will be responsible for maintaining the striping and signage that's outside of the railroad right-of-way on city property. That's, that's, we are responsible for that today. And this is Walnut Avenue. They will be adding pedestrian improvements on the west side primarily. So one of the major items with any project is how to mitigate the impacts. Adding the second rail did result in some moderate sound and some vibration impacts. As was discussed, they were studying in a 2017 report by ATS Consulting. Design of the projects will include addition of ballast mats, where indicated by that study, and we'll go through that in just a minute. But one of the key items for discussion and for your decision in the future will be how to mitigate the sound, or how to do the sound mitigation. There's a couple ways of doing it, that was mentioned, the sound walls, by installation sound walls, installation of a quiet zone. The sound walls would be within the railroad right-of-way, and would be typically the railroad's However, the project does propose, and is, at the 60% design, is proposed with a quiet zone improvement. So going back to that 2017 study, it's a little complicated, it's a little busy, but, so the blue area is actually proposed sound wall locations by the study, where the, where the study determined that there's, that there were sound mitigations that would need to be mitigated by the project. So this is Valley Center on the west end of the project, so the proposal was to pull, install, or the study recommended installing a sound wall along the south side of the track, from Valley Center to Lone Hill, essentially. And then on the north side, they, the recommendations was for a sound wall from Valley Center to essentially Ranell, and this is Ranell and Tudor.
Sheri, can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Is that with or without the quiet zone?
This is without.
So if there were a quiet zone, those sound walls would not be called for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So and within San Dimas, the other location for sound walls are, this area is Via Vaquero, so we've just jumped on the other side of the freeway. Here is San Dimas Avenue, going up through here, this is Via Vaquero and Citrus Ranch Road. So the sound wall would be on the north side of the tracks, just south of Citrus Ranch Road. And then the other sound wall is actually in, within Laverne City limits, so Sunroads. The other thing, there is a, it's very difficult to see here, and I apologize, we were trying to highlight the sound walls and overwrote the vibration mat. So there is a orange, there is a ballast mat for vibration that's recommended at this, at this location, between Via Vaquero and, and Citrus Ranch Road. And on the other sheet, there is no, there is no vibration mat, ballast mat recommended in this area.
And the ballast mats are the same by padding that the gentleman referred to? Or is it a different? Thank you.
So I'm not understanding that, because Mr. Baldurama, I thought said the mats would be installed, well, I maybe jumped to the conclusion they would be installed the entire length. Are there only certain spots that they're going to be installed?
That is according to design on this project, on the 2017 study. Do you want to address that, or?
Sure. So in addition to the 2017 study, there are key locations where there's infrastructure that's added, say for, for turning at a spur movement, where you have angular tracks converging. The research shows that those locations, that results in ultimate additional noise and vibration. So in addition to the location that your director is showing you highlighted, at those key locations where there's additional spur or a track change, all of those absorbing materials would be added at those locations as well.
So I think previously, when you were talking about those sound deadening, or vibration mitigation mats or ballast, I, I was given the, I got the impression anyway, so maybe I was mistaken, that that was going to be near the houses to deaden the vibration near the houses. So is that, are we hearing now that there will be no change in the amount of vibration that the houses are experiencing now? Is it going to be improved? But, because right, we heard from people, and we've seen it, we've felt it ourselves, that there are vibrations along the track if you live in a house nearby.
So the, what this study did is assess locations where that, those vibration levels were exceeding the available standard. And what it was, chose to do is at those locations, put in the necessary infrastructure as mitigation. In addition to those areas, there are locations where you'll have a third track operation, which are these spurs, where Union Pacific operates to get in and outside of three or four locations within the project limits, that create those angular movements. At those locations, at those key locations, we'll add that infrastructure because it's that much closer to the railroad right-of-way.
It, I guess the basic question is, is it going to help with the vibrations that the homeowners are experiencing?
Yes. Then what they're experiencing today, yes.
Okay.
In the locations where the ballast is going in?
Correct.
So in this location here.
And those, this is with the sound wall, in the situation with the quiet zones, would the locations of the ballast mass change, or is this, is that consistent throughout whatever plan is put forward?
So the ballast mass location would not change.
Okay.
So the only thing that would be impacted by, would be, for the, with a quiet zone would be the sound walls.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So as mentioned, there have been two peer reviews of the, of this 2017 study. The city's The city's consultant, DUDAC Engineering, did the review, could not replicate the calculations that ATS came up with. However, they did agree with the conclusion of the report that the, that the quiet zones would provide the best sound mitigation and not just, well, for multiple reasons, which we'll go into in a minute. So as said again, the project as being designed right now does propose to use a quiet zone as mitigation for the noise impacts. And just to, for those in the audience that aren't familiar, a quiet zone is an area, is a segment of rail where locomotives are not routinely sounding their train horn, or their train horn, locomotive horns are not routinely sounded while the train approaches the public highway or crossing. Train horns are regulated by the Federal Train Horn Rule and have been in effect since 2005. Essentially, locomotive engines must begin to sound the train horn at least 15 seconds and over the 20 seconds in advance of an at-grade crossing. The horn is blown at between 96 to 110 decibels. So as a comparison, this would be the same level of sound as a chainsaw, a food processor, marching band, or sporting event. So just to give you a relative idea of sound. The Federal Train Horn Rule also allows exceptions in areas where there's not a significant risk, or the risk is mitigated by supplemental safety measures. Locomotive horns may be used in the case, or actually locomotive horns must still be used in the case when there's an emergency on the track or something's obstructing the track. So the quiet zone doesn't necessarily mean no train horn, it means less train horns. So that's one of the, several of the quiet zone experts that I talked with mentioned that, that makes sure that that's very clear to all the residents as well. Because they will hear, they will hear horns, and in some instances, they are, a locomotive is required to sound the train horn depending on certain, if they meet certain criteria. So most of the trains will not be required to sound their horn. So the use of a quiet zone to provide sound mitigation for a project is an extremely complex subject. And in these next couple of slides, what I'd like to do is just summarize some of the main issues, although not all, you've brought up some in your discussions with Metro. But essentially, the benefits of a quiet zone is that a larger area benefits from silencing most of the train horns. For instance, when you have a, a sound wall, the sound adjacent to the wall is mitigated, but are the areas farther away, 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet, they will still hear the train horn. All the consultants, all three of the consultants did agree that the, that the quiet zone would provide more of a sound reduction than, than the sound walls. Another benefit of a quiet zone is that the, or this quiet zone, is that the project will install approximately $16 million worth of safety improvements to make the quiet, or the project quiet zone ready. So some of those safety enhancements or improvements are required as a part of the SCRA crossing improvement standards, however, some are not. So if you look, if the city, after this project, the city decides to go in and create a quiet zone, we'd like not to do the quiet zone as part of this project, but come in afterwards, 10 years, 15 years after it's built, the cost to upgrade each, each crossing would be about, is estimated about a million dollars. So, per crossing. If the project were not done at all, and we decided to go in and do the, the quiet zone estimate, it's estimated to cost us $16 million to do those improvements. So, so that is of a benefit. However, a lot of concerns with a quiet zone. So the Federal Train Horn Rule requires that the entity that is responsible for enforcement of traffic control at the crossing, that only that entity can apply for the quiet zone. So LA Metro, even if they had, they wanted to, they could not apply for the quiet zone. It has to be the entity that's in charge of the traffic control at that, at that crossing. So that would be the city or, or LA County, if, in their jurisdiction. So again, the application for a quiet zone is a very complicated process, entailing assessment of the risk of injury at a crossing and an installation of safety improvements that reduce the accident risk. Okay? The application involves review and approval of the Federal Railroad Authority, the California Public Utility Commission, the rail operators, which include LA Metro, the Southern California Regional Rail Authority, Metrolink, and Uni-Pacific, and as well as the city. Now, for this project, Metro has begun the coordination and actually done quite a bit of the coordination for the quiet zone, to including getting the, all those agencies together to go through the design elements for the safety enhancements that would be required to make it quiet zone ready. There are significant concerns with a quiet zone again. The city is the applicant for the quiet zone, and with that, we have to follow through with any recertification process. And we'd have to comply, make sure that the, the roadway complies with all of the current sign and striping standards, or, and all of the improvements that were required as part of the, in the roadway as part of the quiet zone. So the additional maintenance that that would take, so to make sure that all the stripings up to date, all of the signs are up to date. In talking with some of the railroad quiet zone experts, the, these additional maintenance protocols have been one of the stumbling blocks for cities in maintaining quiet zones, primarily in snow zones where, you know, snow plow comes through and it wipes out a delineator or a reflector. So those have to be installed. They're, if it's been a part of the, the quiet zone approval by all the agencies, it has to be there. So otherwise, there's quite a bit of liability that the city incurs. And we'll talk about liability in a minute. But also, there's also maintenance cost of the safety equipment. Again, Metro did talk about that. The, the cost of that per crossing for cities in Orange County ended up being about $5,000 per crossing, per year. Okay? So we don't know what that is at this time. We did have discussions where, you know, we heard that, that Metro might pay for this, but that's, may not be the case. So that would, definitely want to make sure, we'll look at the maintenance agreements and make sure that what that cost is, what that proposed cost is. Okay? And then finally, again, can't reiterate enough that the, that there will be train horns blown within the quiet zone, depending on the needs of the railroad, or the determination of that individual locomotive engineer. So liability concerns are probably one of the biggest elements of a quiet zone. So the concern is, the city can actually get pulled into a lawsuit if the lack of a horn is named as a cause for the accident. Additionally, another liability concern is that the SCRA, which is the Southern California Railroad Association, or Authority, I'm sorry, requires that the city, in any, in any quiet zone, that the city indemnify the SCRA. Okay? So that indemnification, typically you would want insurance to, for that indemnification. When we talked with JPIA, they indicated that they do have a program with, with several cities as a member, or three cities as a member right now, that provides a million-dollar aggregate for a claim. But the intent of the, of this, of this insurance policy is not to, is not to pay for an accident or any damages from an accident, it's to provide legal expertise to fight off the claim. Okay? So if the city's not successful in fighting off a claim, then that $1 million aggregate will go away very, very quickly. So even though we do, that, that insurance policy exists, there's still further liability for the city in a quiet zone. And so this limited insurance is about $15,000 to $20,000 per crossing annually. So if you're looking at ballpark costs for a crossing, it's 20,000 to 25,000 is what, from historical records, but each crossing is, would be evaluated independently. Okay? So there may be more costs. And those costs could go up, or they could be, you know, reduced if quiet zones, or depending on, on what, you know, what insurance policy would go with. So again, there's also liability concerns about the city maintenance component. So if we, if we, so all of the crossings have to be maintained with manual uniform traffic control devices. So if there's a change and we don't update that crossing, or that quiet zone crossing, there could be liability because it didn't meet current standards. We did talk about the indemnification language by the SCRA. And then the other concern is, right now, the quiet zone is being used as a, as a mitigation for sound impacts for the project. If the quiet zone, for some reason, doesn't get recertified because of a high accident rate or a high risk of accident, then there could be a possibility the quiet zone is not recertified, and, or it gets decertified, and then you'd have the unmitigated impacts of sound.
How often does the certification, the recertification process occur? Is it like every five years or what?
Two and a half to three years.
Okay. So every three years, we could lose quiet zones permanently?
Or if there's an excessive number of accidents or fatalities.
I see. So it's really even at will? It could change?
Yes.
Okay.
So not aware of, in talking with the railroad experts, the quiet zone experts, not aware of a situation at this time where a quiet zone has been decertified. There is, there is, in Orange County, one of, some of the cities did not do the recertification, and because they did not apply for the recertification, they temporarily lost their quiet zone. Once they did the paperwork, it was restored. So there is some, some component of quiet zone not being renewed. But a lot, I mean, we do have some impact on that as a city by making sure that we, we maintain our, our signs and striping per standard, and then make sure we do the recertifications.
So it's a risk but unlikely, is what you're saying?
It is a risk. I don't know, it has not happened yet.
Okay.
So, oh, sorry. I did want to make one other, just touch base on the public outreach that's going to be occurring. With, Metro's going to be doing several different public outreach meetings. The one in San Dimas is going to be, it's September, is tentatively scheduled for September 1st at the community center, the Plummer Building. And there'll be more information coming out on that. Laverne will have a separate one. And I believe he, Metro mentioned that they had a virtual meeting coming up.
Sherry, would you make sure that we know when both, both of them are, the one in, or the one in Laverne and the one here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Will do. Okay. With that, that ends my presentation unless you have further questions.
Go ahead, Eric, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you go back to, I think it was maybe two slides of the last, this one right here? So the, no really not, or not really no horn, not really no train horn, you made it sound like it's really up to the discretion of the conductor. Is that correct?
So, so they are, I can defer, well, okay. Because you, you're more familiar with what you require of your locomotive operators.
Sure.
Okay.
So right now, there is a regulation of train horns. It's too loud, too long, and one short. That's the pattern that every operator should be, should be using. When they're outside of that pattern, give LA Metro, Metrolink a call, we'll figure out who was operating on that line and violating the rule. When you get a quiet zone implemented, outside of trying to avoid an actual incident, or in the event construction activity is occurring within the railroad, those are the two conditions where you would, you would hear a horn. But if there is a major railroad activity, it's going to most likely require the closure of some of the crossings, so the city would well be aware of those events before they occurred.
So the standard horns, the too loud and the short, would go away, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And they would only use it in cases where there's mitigating circumstances?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
And is there any, and then in terms of enforcement, if people were outside of that norm, you could call them and they would?
Correct.
Give some sort of escalation path?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. If the horns, if they're outside of that escalation path, is there something on the train that says they were, or is it just word of mouth?
Metrolink has cameras on their trains. So I just need a date and a time, and we can pull the cameras and see who's responsible.
Thank you.
I had a question on the next slide, the last slide. Under the initial insurance, you said that that was mainly to fight the, fight the filing of a claim in the first place, or? And is that going to cost a million dollars just to do that? Or what does that million dollar aggregate mean?
So, so the million dollar aggregate is, there's a group of cities that have a, this insurance, they pay, each of one of them pays $15,000 per crossing for the city. And that's the, million dollars is the cap that this policy will pay. So if, if one city gets in a lawsuit and spends $500,000, there's only $500,000 left for the rest of that policy period.
What is that $500,000 in that example used for?
So the, so the whole precept behind a quiet zone is that the supplemental safety measures are safer than the actual blowing of the horn. So what happens is that leaves some ambiguity as to, if you have a, an accident at a, at a quiet, at a quiet zone crossing, the city has now mandated that there's no horns to be blown. Right? So now we're involved in, somewhat in the operation of the rail. Okay? So what the fear is, is that the plaintiff would say that if the horn, had the horn been blown, that the city, that the accident would not have occurred. So without, with a train, if a quiet zone's not in play, the city can immediately say, no, you know, it's the rail operations, you need to talk to the railroad. But now, we're dictating to the railroad that they can't, they can't blow their train horn. So that- So that, that provides some ambiguity. If you talk to, you know, the FRA representatives that I talked to, or some of the other proponents for quiet zones, clearly, they indicate that the supplemental safety measures make the intersection, or the crossing safer. So there should, it should make that point moot. But that has not, you know, that has not been determined by, by case law.
So my question is, what is the five hundred thousand dollars in your example? Does that go?
If.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Sherry.
Sure.
The, the five hundred thousand dollars or the million dollars, that's the limit on the policy, goes towards attorney's fees to defend the city or damages that might be awarded against the city by the court. So there's a total cap of a million dollars. There's a claim where the court finds that the city is responsible for nine million dollar injury. We only get up to the million dollar cap, and we're responsible for the other eight million.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure, since I've been here a couple of years now. This is the first time we've talked about this. So I'm not quite sure how we arrived to the, you know, the 27 scenes study that, you know, includes sound walls and quiet zones. How we arrived at those two. When, when I was campaigning a couple of years ago, there was quite a few people that I talked to that were proponents of some sort of noise mitigation efforts along the MetroLink line, especially in light of the double track project. And they were still concerned about the cost to the city of quiet zones. And that's where the, the thought of wayside train horns came up. And obviously, I'm not a train expert because I didn't understand half of the stuff that we were just talking about to some extent or another. But I'm not sure if at this point it's too late to look into wayside train horns. From what I understand, it's not considered a quiet crossing. So the insurance becomes completely unnecessary on the city's part. The liability is not, not the same. And you still get many of the noise mitigation properties of, of a quiet crossing, although it's not a true quiet crossing. But perhaps that, along with a sound wall, would be the right mixture for us and the right liability and the right cost for us. I'm not sure if it's too late for that. If it is too late for that, and we've already passed that juncture, I think we may have missed the proverbial train on that. But I think it's something at least to look into. It's something that, that when, when I got elected, that I promised that I would at least bring up, is the idea of wayside train horns as a way of balancing both interests, which is the liability side and the cost side with the quality of life issues that the, the train and the project expansion creates.
Okay. Will do.
Hey. Any additional comments? Any suggestions? Hang on. This is not a public hearing, so comments will not be accepted at this period in time, unless the council's own judge decides. Okay?
I think the next item we've got is oral communications, all right?
All right. Yeah. About, yeah, about, about a minute and a half, you'll be able to come up on your oral communications and say whatever you want. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we're going to continue? Any recommendations?
I would say we should, do we need a motion to receive and file the report?
No, you don't need a motion to receive and file.
All right. We'll move on. Oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. Any speaker cards?
Nothing's been turned in, Mayor.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak, sir?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I've lived along the tracks now for six years. And I can tell which direction the train is going from the way the horn blows. If it starts now near Valley Center and continues, then I know it's going eastbound. If it goes, if I hear the rumble of the train go past me and then it starts, I know that it's going westbound because of the way it does. But the engines themselves and the rumble of the train do make a lot of noise when they go by or if they, or if they're slowed down because of something on the track or having to, you know, slow their speed down. I have double glazed windows in my mobile home. I'm on the third row back from the track. When my door is closed, it sounds like an empty garbage disposal running, so it's not really that loud. But when the door is open, it sounds like you've dropped a bunch of carrots or a bunch of lemon peels in there, and it is quite loud to hear just the train go by. So saying they're going to put a buffer under the, the tracks or not put a sound wall up in our area, whereas Charter Oak, it doesn't do anything to mitigate the sound of the engine itself while the train goes by, and it is very loud. There isn't so much clackety-clack that you hear of the wheels going by, but you sure hear the rumble of that engine. And it starts, it sounds like it starts at, yeah, maybe cataract and goes all the way past Lone Hill by the time the train is gone. So it is an extended period. But not putting up a sound wall on our area of the track is not going to help us because we still have other noise besides the train whistle blowing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo those comments. I, I, quiet zones are great for the horn noise, but there is all kinds of other noise. There's all kinds of safety issues. There has been no mention, looking at the, when I said there was no change since 2017 is because we talked to ATS when they were out. They were said, they had done the 30% study. They said they were going to do more like vibration studies. They knew they didn't do any vibration studies by my house. They knew it was vibrating. They said they'd fill that stuff in. Now it's all been, they've re-studied the numbers, and they're going to stick with it, it looks like. There should be a pad, I mean, this is not even a no brainer, I think. There should be a pad through all residential areas. A vibration pad, ballast mats, whatever you want to call them. That's just common sense. You stand there and you feel them. It's not every single train. It's not every day. It's the, those trains, the wheels get out of alignment or whatever. The track needs shaving or whatever they do to it. You know, it's kind of nuts that nothing has changed since we talked to ATS when they were out here. And they said they were going to be doing more stuff. And now they apparently are gone. And now we're, you know, everything's changing as people wise, but nothing's been changed. Fencing is a big issue to me because I think sound walls is because of the safety issue. There has been no mention of additional strong fencing. If you look at what the, what the light rail is doing, they're putting on heavy spiked fence. It's not really, it's straight up and down. We have, currently have the fencing, what you were talking about, Mayor, I forget the, the common fencing. People cut it, I just walked, I walked by it just the other day, and it's, people at, by the San Dimas Canyon Crossing have already raised, they've already moved it and are crossing the track there. It's not, you know, it's not sufficient. They need, it needs a very strong fencing if we don't have sound walls. I think sound walls are the better option. If we don't go sound walls, we should have very enhanced, strong fencing, the same as the light rail uses. The heavy rail is much more dangerous and has less, less mitigations than our light rail system is getting. So like I say, if you look at Arrow Highway and you look at your left side, you have strong mitigations. You look at the right side where MetroLink is, there's none. We have this, this cheap fence sitting there that people crawl. You can tell where they're moving on top of it, and you can tell where they're going underneath it already. And that's where we've had multiple fatalities. There's a bend in the road where you can't see. If trains are not, are not honking their horns, people want to be, they'll be less aware that a train's coming. I don't know how you jump out of the way now when they hear a whistle. If there's no whistles, there's going to probably be more people hit. We'll probably lose our quiet zone, and we'll be stuck with nothing. I, I think we really need these sound walls. They'll help with the safety, they'll help with the mitigations. And they'll help us keep, keep the sound, the quiet zone here. If we don't have a quiet zone, we're stuck. You know, they could put it up initially, and then it goes away. And I don't want to see us in that position. Thanks for listening to me. Thanks for staying up to slay, guys.
Thank you. Any, any further?
Good evening. A couple of things. This, this double track seems to be an advantage to MetroLink, and it's not an advantage to us. I am trying to figure out, they're in the business of moving trains from east to west, and they want to put in a double track. And then they want to hang us with all this other stuff. Through the whole discussion, the gentleman was, was, when John asked him point blank, where are you putting the mats? He talked for two and a half minutes and never explained where he was putting the mats. Are you putting the mats in the whole thing? Or are you just putting, and then he jumbled it around. And you didn't come back at him and go, where are you putting the mats? The city needs to hold MetroLink to, if they want to do this, then they need to make it to our advantage. We don't need to be catering to them. If you take the fifteen thousand or whatever per crossing, that's seventy-five thousand dollars a year. If you divide that out by a million dollars, that's thirteen years of payments. And at the end of, and that goes on for forever. If you just save that money, you probably can hire an attorney that, that will deal with, with this stuff rather than a million dollar aggregate, which the other cities can be eating at and we have no control over. So it could get to the point where we have a problem and there's no money left. And yet, we've already paid the fifteen thousand per crossing. So I think that's a fool's errand in, in my sense. But I think that, A, we should have the quiet zones, and B, there should be a sound wall from start to finish. That keeps people from jumping the fence. That keeps people from going underneath the fence. And if you're on the railroad right of way, you are committing a crime. If a train runs into a person that's on a train track, there's all kinds of case law that goes, you're not supposed to have been there. Why were you there? And the only, the only time that it becomes questionable is at, at the intersections. And with the safety zone, that adds a lot to it. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak towards?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir, you've already spoke?
I forgot one thing.
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I apologize. I forgot one thing. When there are four crossing gates on an intersection, a lot of times you will see one gate left up so that if anybody gets caught in the middle, they have a chance to get out. If the gate came down in front and behind of them, they have a chance to get out. Some of these, they're talking about four gates down at the same time. And if somebody's caught on the track, there's no way for them to get out. So if we have the curbs in place and nobody can make a U-turn or anything else, some of them, we may only need three gates so that it allows of space for the person to get out. Also, since all this hoopla is about what happens at intersections, whether there is a train horn or no train horn, has anybody suggested putting cameras at each intersection to see if it's the person's fault that they're getting in the accident because they violated the crossings? Nobody said anything about that. Because if we prove that they're at fault because they went around the barrier or they did something else, they lifted the barrier, they did something, then they're at fault and they have no claim against the city or against the trains. So that's another thing. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak towards the council? All right. We'll close that oral communications. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Aside from thanking everybody for the wonderful events and the work they did, including city staff, I will save the report for the sake of time.
And city attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Members of the city council, council members' reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency? Seeing none. Public official appointments to the city commissions and outside agencies? Seeing none. City council requests for future items, comments, and updates?
We, there's a.
What?
There's a staff report and some action that needs to be taken on that.
On the appointments.
On the appointments.
Containing liaisons and representatives to outside bodies, like SCAG, COG, school board.
I'm trying to rush it so we can move on to.
Thanks for that. Thank, your heart's in the right place.
Yeah. Sorry. All right. Staff report.
Council, this is the annual review and appointment of city council members as voting delegates, alternates, and representatives for outside agencies and city boards, commissions, and committees. Along with appointing a mayor pro tem, the city council reviews the appointments made to city commissions, committees, and other agencies for changes or updates. In previous years, this process was done in April following the March election. With the change of our election to June, the process was delayed until any new council members were sworn in. Annually, the League of California Cities requests confirmation of the city's voting delegate and two alternates for the annual business meeting. This is an important aspect of the conference to consider and take action on conference resolutions that can improve the quality, responsiveness, and vitality of local government in California. It is important that all cities be represented. This year, the conference is September 7th through the 9th, 2022, in Long Beach. At the June 28th, 2022 city council meeting, the council appointed council member Ryan Vienna as the voting delegate and Mayor Pro Tem John Ebner as the alternate. The Mayor Pro Tem appointment was done at the July 2022 city council meeting, and the council appointed council member John Ebner as Mayor Pro Tem. Council, other agency appointments. Council, council members represent the city of San Dimas on numerous other agency boards and act as the council representative on the city's boards, commissions, and committees. By doing so, they are involved in some of the planning and decision-making for policies and programs that can affect the city of San Dimas and many other cities in the region. Some of the agency appointments provide for compensation to the, to the appointee. The city's boards, commission, and commissions do not offer additional compensation. As part of the appointment process, the city must post on its website the FPPC Form 806, which lists the paid appointed positions to which an official will vote to appoint themselves. This form must be posted prior to a vote or consent item if the appointee will participate in the decision, and the appointment results in additional compensation to the appointee. FPPC Regulation 18702.5 provides that as long as the public is informed prior to a vote, an official may vote to hold another position even when the vote results in additional compensation to the appointee. Staff recommends that the city council review the current appointments to city commissions, committees, and boards, and along with the appointments to other agencies for any changes or updates. And that concludes my report.
All right. You're looking like you're going to say something.
Deborah, what exactly are you asking for? I think we want to talk about the council member that's no longer on the council, that position, correct?
Well, what, what we need is to review the attachment one, to see if there's any changes that council would like to make to these other agencies.
I believe we have to do something because Councilman Bertone is no longer with us.
SCAG. SCAG is one of the agencies where there are, there's compensation. And because that was Councilmember Bertone's appointment, we need to make a new appointment to that. I believe that was the only one that would necessitate a change right now. Everything else could stay the same or.
Well, COG, Dennis was the main representative to COG.
So SCAG, COG.
And also Gold Line Authority. I've been the alternate to the Gold Line Authority.
But I don't think Gold Line, there's, there's compensation for Gold Line.
All right. I think that, I think that the easiest, the easiest thing for us to do, up until we get to city boards and commissioners, why don't we just go? boards and commissioners, why don't we just go right from the top, do the first two pages, and then then go from there? Contract cities, why don't you read them off, and then we'll go from there?
California contract cities currently, Mayor Bedar is the delegate, and any council member can act as the alternate.
All right.
No changes to that?
I'm good with that.
We're good.
League of California Cities, currently, the delegate is council member Vienna, and the alternate is council member Weber.
Sounds great.
So I'm looking at the meeting dates. There's what, three meetings per year?
There's three. Looks like those are quarter. So it's probably quarterly.
Yeah.
Close to.
That sound good, Ryan?
Yeah, it's generally speaking, I've made a couple of them, and Jennifer does a good job of sending the information out. But while we're on the subject, we usually have two alternates for the league conference, and usually the second alternate is a member of staff. Is there staff attending the league conference? Okay, is it too late to make the second delegate appointment?
No.
Then I would move that the city manager or his designee is the appointment for the second alternate for the delegate at the conference.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Well, I definitely second that with a question, though. So I was the alternate that was appointed during that whenever we did that, as Deborah said. But I see that Eric is the Eric Weber is actually the alternate.
Where was last time?
This this is.
For the meetings. I'm talking about the conference.
So the meetings is different than the actual.
The conference.
That's fine. Yeah. I certainly second that, Ryan.
All right.
Okay, so are we Ryan and Eric Weber?
This is for the meeting.
For the conference, can we vote on the staff member for as the second alternate?
Yeah, how about a consensus, just a consensus? Everybody okay with that?
That's fine.
Cool. Don't make plans Friday morning.
The L.A. County City Selection Committee, as it states on the chart, is piggyback with the League of California Cities, so those appointments would be the same as the league.
Jane, you didn't see it? It says automatic delegate.
My chart says piggyback with League of California Cities, and you are the.
I see that.
Automatic delegate.
And I say go down to the delegate that says automatic delegate.
Yes.
What's that mean?
That that means traditionally, I believe, the way the the bylaws read for the league, that the mayors are usually the automatic delegate.
All right, go so.
For the Southern California Association of Governments, we have council Mayor Pro Tem Ebner, and the alternate is council member Vienna.
I'm actually great with that.
I actually would love to offer that to Councilmember Nakano if you'd like it for alternate.
Sure.
All right. Well. You know what you just said?
And I will say that there's there's other ones coming up here. I know the COG is another one. Now, I'm not necessarily angling to get the COG.
Why don't we why don't we wait till we get there?
I was just saying that if if somebody, well, we had talked at one point that you thought maybe I would be the rep to the COG, and that's that's fine with me, but I'm wondering if somebody else would like SCAG. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, Eric, you want to be the SCAG guy? The meeting's only in the middle of the day at Thursday at 12:00 P.M.
Downtown L.A.
Downtown L.A.
So that would be challenging for me?
That's what I was. That's what I was expecting you were going to say.
So that would be that would be challenging.
I can. Let's keep it until if nobody else wants it, until we get to the end of the list.
That's the downside of being retired, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you still interested in the alternate gig?
How often would the delegate?
First Thursday of the month.
Let me put it this way. Most our delegates from the council to SCAG have not typically attended the meetings.
One hundred percent.
But but I'm going to try to attend them, and I think some of them are virtual now, so I'll I'm going to go.
Virtual, so you're trying to break away in the middle of the day?
Yeah.
A lot of a lot of these are virtual.
Virtual for the time being, anyway.
Yeah, for the time, yeah.
Congratulations, Councilmember Nakano.
Yay.
The next one is L.A. County Sanitation District Board. Currently, the delegate and the automatic delegate, that is, is Mayor Bedar. The alternate was council member Bertone, so we do need to select an alternate.
And that's the fourth Wednesday of the month. Right now, it is virtual. They have not said when it's going to become live meetings, but it's at 1:30 on the fourth Wednesday of every month. So we need an alternate.
As long as you show up to every one of them, I'm okay.
I don't miss I don't I don't miss many, but I will tell you that Dennis did go to one at one time or another. He went to one.
Yeah, I just.
And this is one of the boards where there is a stipend. So we have to make the appropriate assignments.
I'll take it if nobody else wants to do it.
Yeah.
And whatever automatic delegate means.
We need we need an alternate.
Okay, so we need an alternate. Who wants to be an alternate?
I don't mind doing it. If I can not take a day off and drive to Whittier in the middle of the day, that'd be great. But if in a pinch, if you're unable to make it, I can swing something.
Is everybody acceptable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, the delegate is the mayor, the alternate is the city manager.
That sounds good. Emmett, are you enjoying that?
You know.
He just got a plaque, of course.
I brought home a plaque, didn't I?
See? Minute you get on, we get an award. That's fantastic.
Besides that, even though it says it's the fourth Wednesday of the month, it was only one one time this year. So we got through it.
Pomona Valley Transit Authority, that representative was council member Bertone, and the alternate is the assistant city manager, so we do need to make an appointment.
I was just going to say, I would like to stay on as the Foothill Trans Joint Powers person. And quite honestly, Pomona Valley Transportation is one one hour a month. And I think because they're both, you know, transportation deals, I would be willing to do them both.
I'm supportive of that.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. Foothill Trans, I'll stay on, but I need a alternate. And John, you've been the alternate.
Yeah, I've been to a couple of meetings that just came. I don't mind staying the alternate to that unless somebody else wants it.
I'm open to doing the alternate. I can make Fridays.
Let's switch that to Ryan.
So Ryan's going to go there?
All right.
Okay, John, you said you wanted you would like to go to council of governments?
I can commit to doing that.
You can commit to that? Who would like to be the alternate?
I can stay the alternate.
Okay. Hi, Eric Nakonal. How are you?
Well.
Good. I was just I was just wondering just how well you were. Are you allergic to mosquitoes?
So again, so the meetings during the day are actually hard for me. So again, it's just.
This isn't in the day. It's seven o'clock in the morning. You can't count that in the day.
Well, keep in mind that my team is located in Europe, so my day starts actually at 6:00.
So you'll be wide awake. Okay.
Are they are they still virtual?
I don't know. I'll come I'll know Friday.
All right, if they're still virtual, I should be able to do this.
Okay, well, I'll handle this Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, and then you'll take it after that. Everybody okay with that?
So I'm seeing here says it says Ryan's already the delegate. Is that?
We changed it last year, so this isn't accurate. And the meeting time actually is on Fridays, second Fridays of the month at 7:00 A.M.
And also, there is no alternate position.
There is no alternate.
There is no alternate position.
And let's get my name out.
We tried that scam already.
Yeah. So my I don't mind returning for a highlight tour to.
Deborah, you'll you'll need to notify them because they need a letter from you.
Okay.
But wait, just so we're clear, though, Eric, this is a I don't mind. I would perfectly happy to let you if you want this.
Scheduling thing for me, so my day typically starts at 6:00 A.M., and then I have back-to-back meetings.
We're going to chalk this up to a owe-me category. Can be a team player here. Great. I'm not getting involved in any more committees, though. They wrote me in last year.
Okay, we'll move to Bonita Unified School District Ad Hoc Committee. There was some conversation at the last time we did that about who wanted to be that that rep. Let's talk about it a little bit. Right now, I'm on it, and Councilman Ebner is on it.
You know, so on that one, I love that role, but I have been on it for a long time. So I'd suggest that I not be the rep, at least for until the next time, at least.
I'm interested in then that position.
And I was wondering, Mayor Bedar, you like going to that.
Yes. But but I mean, if you want it, Donna.
Well, I was wondering, in the past, it hasn't necessarily been the mayor, is what it was two council members at some points. And because I know Sandy McHenry and I were on it for a while, I was just wondering if Eric N. would like that role.
So they I'm fine if others want it. The only thing I would say about this one is the timing doesn't work out for me.
Okay, good. Congratulations. You're done.
I mean, that's one reason I thought of Eric, because the timing would work out.
It will be Ryan and Eric.
Okay.
And I most likely will attend, except I just won't speak.
So in this one, it's not an alternate, both of us attend?
Right.
Two reps. It's like an ad hoc committee.
Like I said, I will I will most likely go, but I won't won't speak. I won't be a speaking member there.
Yeah, on that, that's a good one to let the entire council know when those are happening for that very reason.
Anybody, yeah, anybody could sit there. If we could show up there, maybe we can show a force.
Outnumbered.
All right.
Next is Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension. We do need a council rep because council member Bertone was the rep. Is that one that you would want to group mayor with the other transportation?
I would like to be the rep to that.
You're going to be the river-mountain guy.
I'd like to be the rep to the Gold Line Authority. I don't mind the rivers and mountains also.
Okay, you got them both.
Okay, so we have council Mayor Pro Tem Ebner as the rep. Do we have an alternate?
For which? For the Gold Line?
Yes.
Oh. I got to be honest, guys. Anybody but me.
As long as it's. As long as it's another one of those, you know, once in a blue moon things, I don't mind doing it. But scheduling isn't ideal for me, so.
I'll try to go to all the meetings. I mean, I went to the one last time because Dennis was not on the council anymore, and immediately got appointed to a committee. So there's. So, yeah.
Okay, rivers and mountains conservancy.
We don't appoint that. That's the Senate Rules Committee appointment.
Oh, that's right.
Oh.
So then.
I'm willing to do it if they want to appoint me. I noticed there's an alternate that nobody's.
And I don't know what that process is. I will reach out to them to find out how they make that appointment. And we have there was no alternate selected for this, but I will I will find out if an alternate is required.
Well, we haven't had one, so unless you've been the alternate, John, then we just don't know it.
I haven't, no. Dennis did that all.
And other than that would be it for all of the outside agency assignments.
Yeah, I think we'll just hold on to the city board and commissioners until we've resolved our study sessions and discuss it.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. All right, now, you got everything you need, Deborah?
Yes, mayor.
Okay, well, we'll move on to city council requests for future items, comments, and updates. Ryan.
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to first thank staff and the volunteers and everybody that came out and put on the National Night Out event, the birthday barbecue, and the Boosters Car Show. I think all those organizations did an outstanding job. It was great seeing everybody come together. Every year, it seems to come together really well. It was great seeing council out there at these different events. You know, whether we all came together or not, you know, in passing, but the bottom line is, it was a really good event, really well-attended, and I thought that was great. As far as future events, I would like to see about going to the Fall Contract Cities Educational Summit. It is September 30th through October 2nd. I don't know if there's any other members of council who'd be interested in attending that, but in the past, it's in Lake Arrowhead. The educational summit this year is around emergency preparedness, so I think there'll probably be some good discussions related to the pandemic and stuff like that. So I don't know, anyone interested?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Yeah, and I think that's included in our budget, right?
I think it's one I know I've attended in the past. I don't know if we need an appropriation.
We may need another appropriation because that's that is not one that was included in the budget. The only ones were Contract Cities and League of California Cities. Yeah, the one in Long Beach and the one in Indian Wells for all five council members.
All right. Then I'm looking at the timeframe, August, so there's time. Okay, so can we look at either? Do we need to agendize for an appropriation, or can you just make the appropriation?
If if there's no objections, we'll just take care.
The appropriation for two members to go, or anybody wants from the council?
We just need to know who's going to be attending.
Put me down.
You put me down.
Anyone else?
Put me put me tentative, yeah.
Tentative for me as well. They are may not go.
All right. And then.
We get carsick going up the hill, huh?
In the in the past, it was really good, and it's not as huge production as the annual conference, but it's good in that way, that it's a little bit more focused on some of the issues. Lastly, I was wondering if staff can, as was requested in the in the past, provide an update as it relates to the city of West Covina's efforts related to Public Health Department. They recently actually had an agenda action item, and in fact, are working with California Public Health Department, and it looks like they recently, I believe they passed their their proposal to go ahead and establish the West Covina Health Department, so and appropriate funding to do so, and engaged a public health officer. So if you can, see if you guys can dig that up, and then maybe give council just a report back high level of where they're at with all of that process.
And I'm presuming two council members will be in agreement on that, correct?
I think that was the direction of the past. There was supposed to be a report back on this at some interval that was directed in the past.
And I believe that's true.
Yeah, sort of an ongoing.
We didn't set the interval that I can remember, right?
Okay, cool. Other than that, I encourage people who are interested in that to follow, you know, to go ahead and look at the last agenda and staff report for the city of West Covina on June 21st, 2022. Recently, there was discussion, and I think. Recently, there was discussion, and I think people, at least I know, my phone rang with people concerned regarding mask mandates and things like this. When we had this discussion in the past, you know, people become concerned about, you know, broad-brush applications of public health orders and how that relates to locality and the economy. So, West Covina seems to be moving right along, interestingly enough, and, you know, I'll let staff brief it when they do the research on this, but it seems there's a number of provisions or state law that seems to be a little outdated or antiquated as they've started to fire up their health department, and the California Department of Public Health is requesting time to be able to look at what might need to change for a municipality looking to do that. So I look forward to hearing more about that. That being said, I hope everybody has a great week, and thanks for hanging in there with us.
John?
Well, as others have mentioned, the trifecta of events this past week were, were really great, and just repeating the thanks and appreciation to staff, to the volunteers and the organizers especially, and to everybody who came out and enjoyed themselves. So that was neat. I do want to mention, I don't know if we, we announced that there is another community workshop for the downtown specific plan, that is, the day after tomorrow, Thursday, it's still Tuesday, right? The day after tomorrow, Thursday, August 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and that is in the, where is that? In the community building. So the San Dimas Community Building, right here in the City Hall complex. The only other thing was that at a previous, a previous study session about the commissions, was it Ryan who asked for minutes, or who asked for minutes for, of the previous discussion?
It was Ryan.
And so I, I think we need to make that request specifically at this time for the minutes of the, for more summary minutes as opposed to just action item minutes, so that staff and everybody else can be informed of the, of what the discussion was in those three meetings where we discussed commissions in the Commissioner Handbook. There may be one of them that's already done, because I can't remember where we started, you know, doing action as opposed to summary, but in order to get an idea of what was actually discussed, we need some kind of summary minutes, not just the action minutes. And so I just need somebody else to also agree to ask for that.
My request, I think, was specific to the discussion as it related to districting and the, what were we talking about then? The appointments. So you want, you want the whole discussion on that?
What was, well, I would like that, actually, but what was your request? I'm trying to think of what.
Mine was specifically to the minutes as it related to the discussion on appointments by district versus at large, because we did actually spend quite a bit of time having that discussion about the numbers, how many people, five versus seven versus the exception that was made for the seniors. So there was a long discussion about that. So that's, that's specifically what I was interested in. I mean, if, if, if we're going to go through that, then I would almost just say, if you can send us the meeting dates and the times, and then we on our own can review the video, because it's, it's, they're long meetings.
Right. Well, I, I'd request the summary minutes, but if there's not a second person who wants to do that.
I can second that.
Thanks. So then that would be the summary minutes for, for the portions of those meetings that dealt with commissions, and it would, of course, include the, the, the number and the makeup and the purpose, because I think you were asking for those kinds of things that are related to forming the commissions, and so it would be the entire discussion of those items, that, those agenda items.
Okay. Anything else, John?
The only question on that is the timing of it, because we're going to have a retreat or something to talk about the commissions. Can we get those minutes before that retreat?
There's not a date set for the retreat, so now it'll take time to review that, so.
Okay.
I mean, this may be, I don't have a clue when staff's going to be prepared to, to come up with a date, you know, so, you know, you have to, before you come up with a date, make sure you have plenty of time to get what, what they're requesting.
So we'll ask the clerk to send out the date, so we know when we're actually targeting for that Saturday, so we'll get that request out this week, and then as soon as we know that, we'll know, we'll make it a priority to make those summary minutes since the council's requesting it to inform the discussion that happened at that meeting.
All right, thank you.
They may not be approved, if they're, they may be draft, but if we can get them approval, get them, I'm sorry, we don't approve them. We just provide the summary, the discussion history, as we call it.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Any else, John?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. McConnell?
No comment.
Oh, I like that now. Mr. Weber?
I will reiterate to the massive audience that is left here that I'm super proud of all the hard work that staff did for all of our community events the past couple of weeks. I was able to make two out of the three. I was spending National Night Out in the, the work portion of National Night Out, where I was working it during my day job, but, you know, the, the other events were fantastic, had a great showing, especially the barbecue, holy cow, there was a massive turnout to that, and there was, you know, even people that I know in the community that don't normally show up to those things that were there and that were having a good time, and they even brought up, holy cow, I didn't know this, these things had beer. If I'd have known that, I'd have come to more of them. So I think High Point was a hit, but thank you so much for everybody that was involved in that, you know, the, the boosters and, and Chamber all had a big part of that as well, so that was a fantastic couple of weeks. And I think that is all I had. I feel like I'm forgetting something, but it's super late. Well, I, I guess we can bring that up at this point, unless you want me to wait until we get to the closed session stuff.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say that right now. Just wanted to make sure that everyone realizes that all the volunteers and all the people that were involved in, in the three very successful events that we had this, this last week, it was, it's really, you know, heartening to see just how many people showed up and wanted to represent the city of San Dimas. I sent some friends of mine messages and said, "Look at this. Nine o'clock at night, on Saturday night at the birthday barbecue, we had over 300 people still there." It's truly amazing. Now, I realize people started getting there a little later because of the heat and the day, but when you sit there and, and you look around there at nine o'clock at night, and they're starting to tell the people, "The band just played its last song, and you're going to have to leave," and people are saying, "Boo," you know, they wanted to be there. They, they were having fun, and it was pretty, pretty neat, you know, that, that, and everything that we got going on in the community and with the pandemic and everything that was happening, people really, truly want to get out and socialize with other members of their community, and so I thought it was absolutely super neat, and I'm actually sorry that the birthday celebration is going to be a whole year from now, because it was a lot, a lot of fun. All right, well, I had some other things to say, but I forgot them yesterday. So we're going to go to, in the closed session, we're going to read the titles of, it's the Successor Agency in the City Council Closed Session, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Conference with Real Property Negotiators.
Mayor, I, I need to state for the record that on closed session, item number B, that's an anticipated litigation item, there are two council members that have real property conflicts or potential conflicts on that item, so they are going to recuse themselves and not participate. Those are council members Vienna and Ebner.
Okay.
Both of those litigation?
There's.
Yes, it's for both.
I, I would also like to make a request, Mr. Mayor, if we're willing to entertain it, this agenda is a little robust, and as people haven't quite noticed, I feel like I got hit by a truck today, so I've got early morning. I think a lot of these items that are on this closed session agenda are going to be time-intensive, so if there's, you know, for instance, the anticipated litigation, if that is something that we should tackle tonight, then I'm willing to stick around for that, but if we could postpone as much as we can, that's not so time-sensitive, that would be fantastic.
Are you talking about A and C?
Uh, yeah, that would, if, if those are the ones that aren't time-sensitive, I think the, the anticipated litigation is probably going to be a nice, long, robust conversation.
I would, I would need a second on that.
We definitely need to have item B tonight.
I support, if, if that's a motion to, not table, but push items A and C to the next council meeting, I would support that motion.
I would make that motion.
Okay, second.
Any discussion?
So, to be clear, the postponement is on items A and C, not A and B as originally?
Correct. The city attorney said item B needed to go.
Okay.
Right, needed, yeah, it needed to happen, it needed to occur. It just so happens that just Councilmember Ebner and I will be recusing ourselves from.
I'm saying, talk as long as you want.
Me too. I'm on board with that, too.
I'm sure you agree.
My, my question would be, if we're going to push off A and C, we don't know, we don't know what we have coming up in two weeks, so would we want to just say, wait till the staff, staff look at it and decide when it should come back to us, or, because two weeks from now, we could have a much longer.
I agree with that, yeah. Perhaps staff use judgment, I mean, if that's what you wish.
To a date uncertain, does that work?
I accept your amendment to your motion.
Any other, any comments on it? John? Okay.
All right. So just postpone to a date.
Uncertain.
Uncertain. Okay.
Okay, you, you all right with that?
I'm fine with that.
And obviously, if we can get to it, we get to it, but.
Yeah, I don't want to push it three months, but.
Yeah, this is not a, this is not until Christmas. All right?
I appreciate it.
Okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to adjourn, and we're going to send Councilman Ebner and Councilman Vienna home, and we'll reconvene in the conference room in five minutes.